We are live.
Welcome, everybody, to the planning board meeting for July 1st, 2020. As this is an online meeting, I have to begin with roll call, and that is for the planning board. Please answer when your name is called. Alden Clark. Beth Delisle.
Right here.
Anne Gardner.
Yes.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Liam McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde. Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag. Okay, before we start, as we usually do, I will just go through the agenda. We have two public hearings. The first one is for the Institution for Savings at 93 State Street. Site plan review, ITIF special permit and DoD special permit continued from June 3rd. The second public hearing is Dan and Judy Lynch at 342 Merrimack Street. A 6C special permit continued from June 17th. Our other business is a minor site plan review at Zero Parker Street, and they have asked to continue, which we will do when it comes up on the agenda. 44 Topps Lane, an approval not required. We have an update on the letter of support for the 2020 Open Space and Recreation Plan, approval of our minutes from June 17th, and potential zoning amendments, and other updates from the chair or the planning director. Before I move us into the first item, I'd just like to remind people attending this meeting that because it's online or a virtual meeting, there is access to support materials. Director Port will pull up and display documents as relevant to our conversation. But if you want to see other documents, you can go to the city website. Under Government, click on Planning Board, and that's where you'll see a link to the agenda for tonight's meeting. And each agenda item is then linked to the documents that are supporting that item. And also note that the most recent documents are at the very bottom of the list. I think that prepares us to get started. Director Port, did you have anything else you wanted to add at this point, just about the online meeting?
No, thank you. I will add some additional comments when we get to the public comment period, just to explain how folks can do that. There will be adequate opportunity for that, and I'll explain the details of that when we get to that portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to continue the public hearing on the Institution for Savings at 93 State Street. Is there a representative who is going to begin this presentation online with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, Lisa Mead, me telling them Costa 30 Green Street.
Thank you. Can I just say, can I just say one thing, though? We would really appreciate it if you could keep your presentation to a brief overview and limit it to the presentation on the design for the addition and what has changed since the last time you presented the design. That may help us to move forward into public comment and deliberation on the applications more efficiently.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would suggest, and we will certainly do that. We are talking about the design as presented, but this matter has not been presented since it was re-advertised, and special permits have never been presented. And so we do think particularly for legal purposes, we need to get this information on the record. So I certainly appreciate the board's time, and we will keep it as direct as possible to make sure also that all of the information is before the board for your deliberations. May I start?
Thank you, yes.
So with me here this evening is Michael Jones, the president and CEO of the Institution for Savings. And so, Andy, if you could actually unmute him, he's going to speak in a couple of seconds. Excuse me, Kim Rock, the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Chip Nutter, who is the architect, Christopher Angelakis, who is also the architect. And. Get them muted. And. One minute, please. Andy, could you mute? There we go. So, excuse me, I'll start again. And then Sean Fitch, who's from City Lift, Charlie Ware, and Nick Betts, who are civil engineers, Dr. Judith Selwyn, who's the architectural conservator and historic preservation consultant. The project is located at 93 State Street. We're here for major site plan review, the DoD special permit, an ITIF special permit, which we'll discuss as not having been necessary anymore. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jones. Andy, can you unmute Mike, please?
Yeah, he's been unmuted on my end. Mike, are you able to address the board? He does appear to be unmuted on our end.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Jones, president and CEO of the Institution for Savings. I'd like to start by saying that we're very proud to be the oldest mutual savings bank in the country, and I promise all of you that we will continually strive to ensure that our communities become better places to live and work. Our bank has been a mainstay in this city and has taken a leadership role in nearly every revitalization or significant change Newburyport has undergone over the past two centuries. We have been the beacon of strength and stability and the organization that Newburyport continues to rely on. We shoulder a great deal of responsibility for this city's character and vibrancy, and we are the oldest surviving business in the downtown, and we take our stewardship very seriously. We opened our beautiful main office here on 93 State Street 150 years ago, and we have only had two expansions since that time. We never envisioned or wanted our third expansion to create any opposition, especially from a neighborhood that has undergone numerous significant changes over the years, of which we have not opposed, although we could have in certain instances. Lastly, the residents who moved into this neighborhood should have understood that an unproductive surface-level parking lot would someday be developed by the bank. On behalf of our trustees, employees, customers, and residents of Newburyport, it's incredibly important for our bank to expand our main office facility. This expansion is vital for our continued growth and stability. It will meet all ADA requirements, allowing those with disabilities to finally access our 1870s building. And this expansion will ensure that this city remains vibrant, competitive, and beautiful for future generations to come. You, as a board, are charged with approving or denying our application. I believe your decision will rest on the following criteria: what are the facts? What are the legal requirements? And what are the opinions? So each time you hear from either the advocates or opponents tonight, you should be asking yourselves, are their comments or claims factual? Is it a legal requirement? Or is it a personal opinion? For instance, it's a fact that the height of this building as designed is 29 feet 8 inches. It is a legal requirement that the building height cannot exceed 40 feet. It's an opinion that the bank is too tall or too small or just right. It's a fact that the setbacks of this building are as follows: 4.3 from the sidewalk on Prospect Street, 4.3 feet, that is, and 11 to 13 and 1/2 feet from the sidewalk on Otis Place. It's a legal requirement in this district that the building can be built to the property lines, virtually allowing for no setbacks. It's an opinion that the setback is not enough or that the setback is too much. You may hear tonight that the building is massive, and that's an opinion. Then there are factors that we can't do anything about unless, of course, we did nothing and kept this parcel as a surface parking lot. These include things such as the existing exposure to sunlight or airflow will change. Well, yes, it will change, but not dramatically, as we will show you tonight. Or that the addition is blocking the closest of Butters Kitchen window, which is a mere eight feet from the ground. The reality is any building will block this window. Bank management and trustees have spent a considerable amount of time and money working with our architects, engineers, and attorneys redesigning this building and have incorporated the majority of the suggestions from the February Historical Commission's report and the various feedback from both the planning board and the Butters. Please understand that the first design of this building was three stories. We have listened, we have compromised, and we have substantially reduced the size of this addition and cannot make it any smaller and meet our business needs. Nobody cares more about the appearance of our buildings and our grounds than we do. This is our flagship location, and this expansion will be beautiful when complete. Please trust us to prove to you that we will do the right thing for our city's 17,000 residents, as we have time and time again. I realize this board is obligated to hear opinions from all who wish to speak tonight, but I also know the board does not have a legal requirement to satisfy or resolve these opinions. However, if personal opinions are going to be contributing factors in your decision, then our contributions to this city absolutely need to be considered, which we believe far outweigh the opinions relating to the building's height or length, especially when it is factually smaller than the ordinances allow. In closing, please continually ask yourselves, what are the facts? What are the legal requirements? And what are the personal opinions? I thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Chair, since the last time I reiterated the entire procedural process, I know that that was on the record, so I won't go through that again. But since that time, since June 3rd, the Historic Commission took up another review of this matter at their meeting of June 26th. We'll go more into that detail, the Historic Commission review, however. A few things I think are important to think about, because I know, I presume, you have all read that. And so as we go through our process tonight, I want to point out a few things. It's the position of the applicant that the Historic Commission meeting was arbitrary. First, there was a new member who participated, who did not participate in the original February meeting, and from whom many new ideas were put forward, which were not part of the original Historic Commission report. Secondly, the chair prohibited the applicant from full team access, from speaking and making a presentation or addressing issues raised by the commission and other attendees. The commission deliberated on something that was not presented. To that end, I would respectfully remind the board that the DoD ordinance requires, and I quote, "Before acting on a DoD special permit application, the SPGA shall consider, if any, any historical report submitted by the Historical Commission." This board is a special permit granting authority in this situation, and as a result, while you are required to consider the report of the commission, you are certainly not bound by it. We'll provide comments later consistent, which show the inherent inconsistencies with the original report and that which has recently been submitted. Next, to correct the chair of the Historic Commission in relation to a statement I made at that commission meeting when briefly permitted to speak, I implored the commission that what they were doing was considering a set of circumstances which do not exist in reality. I did not say that the bank needed to satisfy, what the bank needed to satisfy, was a fantasy. Indeed, the commission's outright statement that they would not consider the entirety of the existing building on the lot by also including the 1980 addition, and that they would not entirely consider the commercial zoning district in which the property is situated, was in fact dealing in fantasy, as they were not making any determination on the facts. Next is to the parking, which we will seek to withdraw before the close of the hearing. The applicant has complied with the parking requirements. Notwithstanding the fact that the city has determined to interpret the zoning ordinance differently than it has interpreted it since it was adopted in December of 2017, the bank satisfies the zoning ordinance, and I believe that you have a letter from the zoning code enforcement officer to that effect. The bank is providing 60 spaces on-site, 38 for the existing conditions, and 22 for the proposed construction. Having addressed those matters, let me now move on to the petition directly. After our initial meeting with the Historic Commission and this board, the bank also took the time to meet with city staff and a working group to carefully consider the feedback it had received to date. As a result of all of this input, the bank has painstakingly addressed the issues raised in its new design, while at the same time obtaining additional space it needs for the success of its business. The city's peer review engineer, the city engineer, and the fire department have all reviewed the updated plans and advised the board all of their comments have been addressed. The Commission on Disabilities Chair supports the project. The institution proposes to construct a two-story addition at the rear of the property, which will attach to the 1980 addition. The first floor will be used for stack parking, the second floor for office space. Property consists of 36,998 square feet in area and is located in the B2 zoning district and the downtown overlay district. The property is located at the corner of State and Prospect Street and enjoys frontage of 491 feet along the streets. The proposed addition is located approximately 188 feet from State Street and just over 100 feet from the 1871 historic structure. The 1871 building is 32 feet 5 and 1/2 inches in height. The proposed addition is 29 feet 8 and 3/8 inches in height. The original building is listed as contributing to the district data sheets and to the new report historic district. The new space is meant to accommodate the staff supporting bank operations. The redesign process, the building was in the redesign process. The building was reduced in total square footage and is 25 feet shorter in length along Prospect Street. The design of the structure has changed dramatically by incorporating those items which we were requested to incorporate: textural changes, color, reduced massing, incorporating fenestrations and openings consistent with both the original bank building as well as being reflective of the designs and patterns of the residential portion of the neighborhood. Consistent with the original Historic Commission comments, the bank has introduced vertical and horizontal interruptions and contrasts in colors and materials. Importantly, a number of the design elements, including the coins, use of brownstone in the lentils and sills, use of copper, and the window patterns are reflective of the important elements of the 1870 building. Importantly, these changes are consistent with the standards for new construction in the DoD, which provides, so long as new construction and additions are so compatible, the SPGA shall not require the reproduction of historic styles and on the contrary, shall encourage contemporary styles of architecture to aid differentiation of old from new. This standard, of course, would apply to the existing structure and its setting. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Ware and Nicholas Betts, who are with Meridian Associates to review the site plan and the proposed landscaping plan. Thank you.
Good evening, hopefully I can be heard. The, I can walk us through these plans. I know you want us to be brief. The first sheet is just a cover sheet, and then if we could move on to the second sheet. Yeah, this is a existing condition plan, shows the existing building to the front, and then the second, the, it's the first addition in the middle of the site. And then to the north of the site is the existing parking. If we can move to the next sheet. This sheet is a layout sheet, shows the existing conditions. It also shows the proposed parking to the rear of the site, and it shows one additional parking space next to the existing, or the original bank to the front of the site. That's correct, that's sort of correct. This plan also shows, right next to that, shows a subsurface detention basin. And if we can move to the next sheet, shows the utilities, and we'll show that as well. A little bit more detail on that. Currently, the site has no, has no real stormwater management on the site. We worked with the city engineer as well as the peer reviewer, the town's peer reviewer, and provided detailed drainage calculations of this site. There is a slight increase in the total amount of impervious by the project. However, the introduction of this, of this detention basin actually reduces the amount of stormwater flow from the site. The peak flows by about, just short of, I believe, of 25%, which is what the city engineer had explained, that he would like us to shoot for, given that there are issues with drainage out in State Street. So this would actually have a, an improvement to the drainage issues which are experienced in the street. The, all of the impervious surfaces are collected through catch basins, run through the detention basin. And then there's also a number of what, technic units, which improves the water quality that will run from the site and will ultimately improve the water quality out in the Merrimack River. We also, in Prospect Street, there is, there's any number of utilities in the street, including sewer, water, electric, there's a gas service, and all those utilities are readily available, and this plan shows all of those connections. If we can move to the next sheet. And this sheet is the architectural plan. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Nick Betts, our LA for this project.
Nick, are you able to address the board? You are unmuted on our end.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Nick Betts, landscape architect with Meridian Associates, worked on this project. If you'd like to zoom into the addition part, that's where most of the landscaping occurs. Perfect. So as mentioned, the building setbacks on both Prospect and Otis Street provided us an opportunity to soften the building with some landscaping. This includes a small planting area to the northwest corner of the proposed addition with some lower evergreen shrubs, consisting of inkberry, holly, and yews continuing along Prospect Street. It's important to note that this is the only greenery on the section of Prospect Street and helps to soften the building while improving the pedestrian experience along the adjacent sidewalk. We were also able to take advantage of the increased building setback on Otis Place, where we provided a more extensive landscaped area, consisting, again, of hollies, boxwoods, some andromeda, a lower layer of drought and salt-tolerant perennials, as well as some larger service berry trees. The planting palette is comprised mostly of species that were found around the existing buildings to maintain a consistent planting language throughout. We also made sure to select appropriate plants that can thrive in a roadside condition, being exposed to salt, heat, and the occasional drought. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please. These are some site details of specific features of the site. We don't need to get too deep into these. You can go to the next slide, I believe it's more. And the next slide, please. This is the proposed lighting. I'll try and explain, it's a little hard to see at this scale, but you can see the green, with the callout, the existing poles to remain. Those are all, as I just said, existing light poles that will remain on-site. There is one orange pole at the entrance to the new building, which is a proposed light pole that will match what's already on-site there. And then most of the lighting shown on this plan is along the back access path, where you'll see some, again, some orange circles, and those are actually wall packs that are lights recessed into the walls that provide downlighting just enough to illuminate that path. And the colored contours that you can barely see along the path are the foot candles projected by those lights. We made sure to mount the lights at five feet to keep any light from being thrown to the neighbor's yard. And again, there's that six-foot cedar fence, which also prevents any light from leaving the site. I think. Next slide.
I think, Andy, if you could just go back one slide, I just want to point out one thing that Nick and Charlie forgot to point out. We did have a bike rack, and that is adjacent to the ATM entrance between the 1871 building and the 1980 building. And so the details on that bike rack were on the detail sheet that was provided earlier. I just wanted to point that out, thank you very much. So at this time, we're going to turn this over to Sean Fitch of City Lift, and he's going to talk about the parking that we're going to provide in the building.
Sean, are you able to address the board? You are unmuted on our end. Do you happen to know Lisa, if he's on a phone by any chance?
Yes, I am.
Okay. There you are.
Yeah. Is that audio clear? That's, that's the computer and not my phone. That's sufficient, you can use that.
Sean, we can hear you, go right ahead.
Okay, great. So, good evening, Sean Fitch, City Lift. Briefly on Slide 1, just want to highlight that we are, I'm getting a ton of echo. So I'm, can, I am, I'd like to use my phone connection. Can we do that? I'm on the 8459.
Yep, one second. I do not see an 84, oh, yeah, okay, hang on one second.
Excellent, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Oh, perfect, thank you so much. I was just a ton of echo. My apologies. So, yeah, just briefly, City Lift is a US-based company with hundreds of installations of these types of systems throughout Massachusetts, the tri-state area, and the west coast of our country. If you could, please advance to the next slide. City Lift has been manufacturing and installing these systems for well over 25 years, in excess of 30,000 spaces installed. Our systems are time-tested, robustly designed, and highly reliable. As I mentioned, 100-plus installations in the United States. The puzzle is extremely versatile, very quick, fast, secure, and quiet. Please advance. Puzzle operation. Puzzles are accessed easily by use of a key fob or kiosk. Either the fob is depressed or the code is entered into the kiosks for access. The gate opens, the driver pulls into their space. Upon exiting, the driver closes the gate by pressing the green button on the kiosk, or again, by depressing their fob. For retrieval of their vehicle, it's the same process. The driver calls their vehicle with either the fob or the access code at their kiosks. The gate will open, driver accesses their vehicle, and exits the system. Please advance. The three-level puzzle with pit installation that we would be using on this project accepts a wide array of vehicles, including SUVs, crossovers, and sedans. This installation is designed to be versatile for users and to maximize the efficient use of the space of this building. Puzzles with a one-level pit are accepted by municipalities across the US because of their efficiency, accessibility, and fire protection. Many cities like Boston have limited subterranean levels of puzzle systems to one level due to these concerns. In compliance, City Lift only manufactures and installs puzzles with a one-pit level. Please advance. Vehicle sizes that are accommodated in the system- Vehicle sizes that are accommodated in the system. You can park vehicles like the BMW 5 Series, Tesla Model S, Volvo XC60, Dodge Durango, Jeep Grand Cherokee, and hundreds of other makes and models are accessible in this system. Please advance. I do believe we have a video prepared.
Sean, this is Jared Bonnie Sontag. That was, I think, enough information for us. We are expecting a lot of other presentations and comments tonight, and I ask that we not see the video if you don't mind.
Perfect. That's absolutely acceptable, and you can advance through these without discussion. Just allow a moment for each slide of picture. These are local installs in Boston. And you can just quickly, if you'd like, just advance through them so everyone can get a look at what the finished product would look like in the inside of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. And now, now we have Ron Mueller, who is the traffic engineer, who's going to do a brief report on the traffic memorandum.
Thank you, Lisa. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. So for the record, this is Ron Mueller, Principal of Ron Mueller and Associates and the traffic consultant on this project. I'm going to keep this very brief because quite honestly, there is not a lot to talk about regarding traffic impacts. If you recall, I did make a presentation on this project back in February and described the minimal impact of this project would have on traffic conditions. And if anything, the only changes that have been made is a slight reduction in the size of the building. And since traffic generation is based on the square footage of the building, then in turn, the traffic generation is actually going to be slightly less than what I presented to you back in February. So not by much, only one vehicle. But in total, we're talking about a traffic generation for this project of about 12 to 13 trips during the peak hours. That's total of both entering and exiting traffic. In reality, the traffic generation would likely be even less than that because the bank anticipates adding only seven employees as a result of this expansion. So you would obviously have quite a bit less traffic. But since we base traffic generation on square footage, we kept with that same methodology of 12 to 13 trips being generated as a result of this project. Once that traffic is distributed onto the surrounding roads, you're going to have a very, very negligible increase in traffic. You're talking in the range of one additional car every 10 to 16 minutes during those peak times. And those kinds of increases are well within the daily fluctuation of traffic, and you're not going to have a noticeable impact of that additional traffic. One last thing I'd like to point out is because we requested a waiver from the requirement to prepare a full traffic study, one of the mass DOT standards for requiring a full study is that a study should be done for any project that generates, or I should say adds, 100 or more cars to any street or intersection. Obviously, with a total generation of only 12 to 13 trips, this project will never hit that threshold that would require a full traffic study. With that, I'll turn it back to Lisa.
Thank you, Ron. And okay, at this time, we're going to go through the architectural drawings and proposal for the proposed addition. And I'm going to turn it over to Chip Nutter, who is the primary architect on the project.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Chip Nutter. I'm the architect for the Institution for Savings. My company is Woodman Associates Architects. I designed the clock tower that's on the site right now. The original, let me see. The original bank building was constructed in 1871 and was added on to around 1904. Another addition behind the building was constructed in 1980 and is connected to the main building with an elevated one-story connector. We are proposing to add on to the existing buildings at 93 State Street to accommodate the growing needs of the bank. Again, the setbacks we're using are the largest that exist on Otis Place and Prospect Street. We will not be altering any features of the 1871 building. The addition is over 100 feet behind the original building so as not to overwhelm the 1871 building. It is obvious that it is subordinate and secondary to the historic building and does not visually overwhelm it. In order to connect the addition to the complex, we use a smaller-scale connector using an aesthetic similar to that on the 1980 addition. This achieves the effect that the complex looks like three interconnected buildings rather than one large building. We thought of the addition as a quiet background building to not compete with the existing ones. It is intentionally designed to look like a commercial building because it is a commercial building. However, we are cognizant that it abuts a residential neighborhood and provides a transition to that neighborhood. We've used materials like brick, brownstone, windows with muttons and copper to be compatible with the existing structures. We have used massing and relationships of solids to voids similar to the existing buildings. We've used the rhythm and size of window and door openings similar to the existing buildings. And to enhance compatibility with the existing buildings, we will be using the same brick as the 1980 building as well as the narrow brick joints that exist on both of the existing buildings. We angled the corner of the addition to relate to the rotated clock tower at the corner of Prospect and State and the tower at the library across State Street. We've met with the planning board to review the project and received some very helpful and relevant comments. To break up the massing of the addition, we have added rectangular and angled bays similar to the homes on Prospect Street and Otis Place. We've also added projecting sills and a base course as well as contrasting projecting coins, which also better complement the 1871 structure. Now, if you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. This is drawing 1.2. This shows the ground level plan. The building on the left is the 1871 building. The one in the middle is the 1980 addition. And the one to the right of that is the new addition. The addition is connected with a setback lobby to make it look like three interconnected buildings. The ground level will house enclosed parking and a lobby for employees. There is also an elevator that will make the entire building fully accessible. Along Prospect Street, you can see the angled bays. And along Otis Place, you can see the rectangular bay. The setback from the property line on Prospect Street to the bulk of the building is 4.3 feet. On Otis Place, the setback from the property line is 13 and 1/2 feet to the building and 11 feet to the bay. And there will be landscaping within the setbacks on both streets. The setback to the south property line will be six feet. Again, all of these setbacks are greater than one sees in the adjacent neighborhood. If you go to the next slide, please. Drawing 1.3 shows the upper level. It will hold the upper lobby and office space as well as office support space. The exact layout of the office space is yet to be determined due to recent changes to the office environment due to the COVID virus. The next slide, please. Next slide, please, Andy. Thank you. Drawing 1.4 shows the roof plan. We have moved the mechanical equipment to the roof of the lobby space and added a screen wall so that it will not be visible. There will be an exhaust fan on the middle of the addition roof, which will not be visible from the surrounding streets and sidewalks. Now, if you could skip through the next three drawings, Andy, because they're just in large plans, and go to slide number 28. Thank you. This is drawing 3.1. It shows the existing building elevations. And the next slide, please. This drawing 3.2 shows the proposed elevations, including the existing buildings for reference. Here, you can see that the height of the addition is 29 feet 8 inches lower than the height of the 1871 building. And also, you can see how far away it is from the 1871 building, over 100 feet. The next drawing, please. Okay, this drawing 3.3, it shows the elevations of the proposed addition at a larger scale. On detail one, that's the first one at the top, you can see the glazed lobby connector, which creates separation from the existing building to the 1980 addition. The materials on the lobby will be bronze-colored storefront and copper, similar to the 1980 addition. Now, the main part of the addition will be clad with the same brick as the 1980 addition. We have also used a copper cornice, similar but not identical to the one on the 1871 building. We've used windows with muttons compatible with the ones used throughout the neighborhood to be more pedestrian-friendly. You can see the angled bays facing Prospect Street. They've been added to break up the mass of the elevation and to enhance compatibility with the neighborhood. We have also added stone coins at the corners to relate to those on the 1871 building as well as a stone base. You can see the stone lintels and sills on all of the windows, similar to both of the existing buildings. Again, that adds a little bit of texture and relief on the building, shadow lines. You can see that the maximum height of the building is now 29 feet 8 inches, far lower than the maximum light height of 40 feet. It is also lower than the 1871 building, again, over 100 feet away. On detail three, you can see the Otis Place elevation. It shows a rectangular bay similar to what you see in the neighborhood. And if you go to detail four, this is, detail four is the south elevation facing Garden Street. We have added ground floor windows to break up the mass of the building. And there will also be a six-foot-high cedar fence further separating the building from the Garden Street neighbors. Then if you want to go to the next sheet, 4.1, this is a section through the building we created for the city's reviewing engineer. Again, you can see the height of the building at 29 feet 8 inches. You can also see it in relation to the home at 11-13 Prospect Street. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chip. And now we're going to turn it over to Chris Angelikas, who is another architect that we have on the process, on the project.
Good evening. If everyone can hear me, if you go to the next, thank you. This is a-
If we can't hear you, maybe you need to unmute yourself.
I'm showing myself unmuted.
I can hear him.
Yeah. Okay. I will continue, Madam Chair. Is that okay?
Please do.
Okay. I've been working with the bank and really assisting Chip in really thinking about how this building fits in context and fits with scale. And I wanted to present this tool that we were using, where we went and painstakingly modeled the heights of all the adjacent buildings, really to make sure that we were feeling that we were being very honest about how this building sat in context. Next slide, please. These first two are just really overall, they're just overall views that you can see. This is nothing that you would ever see in reality. However, it does point out that a lot of things that have already been mentioned, which is the distance back from the 1871 building. Its connection to the 1980s building and the way they work is three separate pieces on the site. Can you go to the next slide, please? And really, the point of really testing with this kind of tool is to look at it in context. What does it really feel like from the street, from the sidewalk? How do the elements such as the brick texture, the brownstone textures, including also the copper cornices, start to make dialogue with both the 1871 building and the neighborhood? Next slide, please. Next slide is a detail, and this is really talking about the proportionality of windows. The size and heights of windows here are actually very consistent with commercial buildings of the mid-19th century types. However, a lot of care and attention was thought about the proportionality of these windows to be in dialogue and harmonious with the adjacent neighborhood. As this building starts to slide back into the residential neighborhood, it's very important that that dialogue happen. So there was a lot of care and attention put to that. You especially see the bays. The bays are very thoughtful in proportion to be able to have that dialogue. Thank you. And it's just another view. We thought it was very important to make sure that we're always looking at this on-street level as if a pedestrian were walking or someone was driving down the street. That's how this building will be experienced. I think if the board would remember in a previous submission, this building had a tower on this corner. After the comments were heard at that time, it was, we did some hard look in really understanding that while that tower had some contextual clues to it that we thought was appropriate at the time, that really looking at reducing the massing, having a stepping-back effect here actually did a lot about how the eve lines of the adjacent homes also start to step down at this location, again, trying to be as contextual as possible. Next slide, please. In an Otis Place, you know, the thing we're trying to do here is the setback is the major feature here, and you know, the sensitivity of where the face of the new addition here sits in relationship to adjacent homes is quite, is really the story we're trying to get across. You know, by rights, this building could step all the way out to the sidewalk, which I think would be a very insensitive move to make for the adjacent buildings. Again, the window shapes, the window, the dividing of the windows, the projecting bay. All of these things are scalar elements that bring the size of a commercial building and start to have a dialogue with the scale of the adjacent homes. The next, the next image is really, just shows you that we actually went through a pretty, a survey of the homes in the neighborhood and measured out the eve heights and peak heights of all of the adjacent buildings. You know, we wanted to make sure that we were not tricking ourselves at all as to where these things sat and how our architectural elements had a relationship to them. And if you look at the next image, please, you can see we were trying to be very thoughtful about how the street wall works. The Prospect Street, street wall is quite important. How these eve lines start to line up, how they create a datum on the street, and how this building is paralleling those datums, creating a much more contained, much more unified street face as we're coming down Prospect Street. And I'll turn that over to Judith.
Thank you. I'm Judy Selwyn, and I've been involved with the bank, I think it's 15 to 20 years. It's hard to remember now. And most of you know me mainly for the work I've done in restoring the roofing and more recently, the facade of the building. But that's not the only thing I do. Although most of my technical work is in masonry and roofing, I did sit on my community's preservation commission for close to 30 years and shared it for a good bit of time. I actually also was on the original committee that did the revisions to the Secretary of the Interior's standards about 30 years ago. And in that time, we've seen a large documentation of interpretation of the standards. And the thing to note is the standards are very simple documents. They're just a few sentences, really. But each building and each situation is different. The standards are not answers. They need interpretation. And one of the very important things to look at is reversibility and the impact on the historic building. Can you go to the next slide, please? This building, of course, as you know, is not connected to the historic building. You can see it in this view. It's 180 feet back, does not touch the fabric of the historic building at all. The, I really want to make that point that is very important. And the other thing I want to talk about in this slide is that preservation is not a static thing. The idea of what's appropriate has changed over time. Not only is it difficult to interpret because every building is different, but I want to talk for a minute about how that interpretation has changed over time. As you know, the Italianate bank building was built in 1871. But by 19- But by 1904, the bank recognized that the building was too small for its purpose and an addition was built. And at that point, the addition was built with a design that was so seamless that most people don't even realize that the building that they call the historic building is in fact two pieces. And the wings that you see on the side with the flat roof. And again, I think you saw in some of the aerial views that most of this building in fact does have a flat roof. It has a wide copper cornice. But in 1904, identical materials were available for use from that, from the 1971, 1871 construction. And in fact, some of the materials were reused. Some of the windows that were covered up by the new construction were moved out. And the brownstone on the back of what was the original building was moved to the back of the new building. And going on a bit, we know that by the 1950s and 60s, Newburyport was not the place it is now. But there was a large effort to revitalize the city that very successfully has built a very vital downtown commercial district that really is a draw not only from people that live on the North Shore, but people that live regionally and internationally. By the 1980s, again, the bank outgrew its premises. As the city revival increased, the bank expanded to meet the demand of the increased population and the increased commercial base. But what happened in 1980? In 1980, the philosophy was no longer to match the historic building. The appropriate thing at that point was to be modern, to be fresh, to be new. So we have a 1980s addition while it uses the same brick. It certainly is completely modern and different vernacular. Now we get to the present time. And I think I'm glad Mr. Jones mentioned the very important point that a, an engraved parking lot is never considered an improvement or an asset to historic district. It was very clear that at some point, this lot within the downtown overlay district, which was a zone for commercial use would be built on. And the logical use was that of the bank as it expanded. And what I want to do now is take you on a little tour of the neighborhood and the previous photographs you saw. You might say, well, those were sketches, you know, maybe they're pulling the wool over my eyes. But with modern technology, we're actually able to honestly place our new building visually within the context of the existing building. So what you're seeing is true to scale and accurately displays the new building in a way that I think can be very easily understood. So here we are at the corner, we're seeing our building 180 feet back. So now we're going to get a little closer to the building. We're going to go towards the Prospect Street end of the building. And now, of course, the new building is coming into view. And I was first presented with this building back in January. And at that point, first, the building had a very high pediment at the face closest to you. It also had a big duplicative balustrade and brownstone around the entire building. It had windows that were pretty unpleasant and out of context with the district. It had a flat front. It was a pretty simple box. The building was also longer and higher than the building we saw that we were presenting tonight. The first meeting with the historical commission pointed out some very useful things to us. They talked about trying to break up the mass of the building. And I hate to repeat, but I will. And I'm going to go a little further down the street as we see some of the things that we did to break up the mass. I'm going to go to the next slide. Okay, we're beginning to see the new building. And what do we see as that fellow approaches the building? We no longer have a two-story corner. We have a corner that's set back. We no longer have a pediment and big windows. We have not only a lower scale building, but a building that speaks more quietly. I'm going to keep going down Prospect Street. And the next thing we see, of course, is the bays that we've introduced. And as we go through this presentation and we show more of the surrounding buildings, you will see that this is a very common language of all of the surrounding buildings. The one, we have kept the coins and we've introduced, as Chip said, the brownstone lintels and sills and divided light windows, again, to reflect not only the 1871 building, but the vernacular of all of the surrounding houses. And again, this interplay between a commercial building and a residential structure, I think, is very emblematic of Newburyport. And basically, when the heyday of Newburyport was before the, or the first heyday was before the invention of the car. And people walked from their residence to their work. So there was always a proximity of the workplace to the house. The other thing I want to begin to point out here is the rhythm of the existing house in the background, which is on Otis Place. And you see two windows in the left wing, two windows in the central wing. And if we look at our win, our building, we're also divided where two bays, two bays, two window bays with the projecting bay below, again, two window bays, two window bays with the projecting bay below and two window bays. We've kept the rhythm that we see in the other buildings. Can we get to the next slide, please? Now we're at the corner. And again, we've introduced another element. You've seen it before, but, but here you're seeing an actual photographic context of the bay which is set back, as you've heard before, it's set back at its face 11 feet and the building wall 14 feet. And there is a generous planting bed. And what we've tried to do here is our bay begins to reflect the eve line of the house next door. And of course, the house next door is small, but we see again the two bay repeating pattern. And we see the angled bay which we have provided. Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide. Now we're looking down. We're looking down Otis Place and both Otis Place and Prospect Street are very precious streets. They're described in a material at Massachusetts Historical by a special form. Actually, that form is no longer used, but it was a form basically for a streetscape. And what do we see here? We see every building has bays. The other thing we see is that a lot of the buildings have taller projecting elements. The house on the left has a gable above its projecting bay. The house at the distance at the next corner on the right side, it has basically almost a two-story turret. But we're seeing in these houses on the left angled bays, angled bays, angled bays. Every building has this rhythm. The other thing we've been able to introduce on the street, and we'll talk more about that. And some of that has been presented by our landscape architect, is we've been able to set back significantly further than required in the commercial zone, which has allowed some landscaping. I'm going to go a little further down the street on my walk here. Now, I've gone around the corner and I'm on Garden Street. And what am I looking at? I'm looking through the Garden Street backyards at the historic building. And the historic building, I want to note, is almost on its lot line facing on the side that is closest to Garden Street. But the buildings on Garden Street, on that's Garden Street, they have substantial backyards. And here we do begin to see some landscaping and we can see the impact of our building on this street. The next slide. Now we're going a little further down. And again, we see the existing building there. Now I want to take another view. This time I'm looking between, I believe I'm between seven and nine Garden Street. And that is the site of our new building. And I want to point out that these two, these two buildings have about 30 feet of backyard. And then we're set back beyond that. So we are actually at a considerable distance from these buildings. We are substantially further away than these buildings are from each other. Now I think we're going to go back again to Prospect Street. And I want to go and discuss sort of some of the things that Chip was talking about. We see the building here on the left, an Italianate building at the corner of Prospect and Otis Place. Here we have a two-story projecting bay. And what do we have on the right side? We have a wall of buildings. We have a wall of wooden houses that are flat front buildings. These are zero setback from the street and they are very, very closely spaced to each other. And again, they repeat the two bay pattern. They repeat the kind of eve line we're seeing on our building. And again, the perspective you're seeing here is an honest perspective. This is actually how our building will look in this setting. And the buildings, in fact, on the right side of Prospect Street, as interesting as they are as a remaining historic artifact, they are extremely close to each other. They're separated such that there aren't even driveways between those houses. The right side of Prospect Street reads as a two-story continuous wall of building. And in fact, that continuous wall is much shorter than in our building. I want to take you to the end of Prospect Street and have you look at the distance. I'm going to go back one slide again. We're going to stay on Prospect Street. And that is the library, which of course is a large brick building and of recent construction replaced an even larger brick building. That was the YMCA building that unfortunately faced a fire. Now I'm going to give it back to Lisa, who's going to take you a little further afield in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Andy. You could go back to that one slide. I'm going to briefly go through the criteria, Madam Chair. So the criteria for site plan review under section 15G, the ordinance has five criteria. The first is community character. Of course, this property is located in the P2, B2 zoning district and is adjacent to the other businesses, indeed fronts on the main commercial street in the downtown. We've shown how the proposed addition is not only consistent with Newburyport in general, and we will talk about that a little bit more. And how official buildings of this type work with adjacent residential streets, but also within the DOD and how the applicant has revised its design to reflect that of the existing buildings on the property and be mindful of the patterns and massing in adjacent residential neighborhoods overall. The building is consistent in height of the surrounding homes and notwithstanding the added space, the lot remains one of the least intensely developed lots in the B2 zoning district. As Chris pointed out, the height and massing indeed are consistent with the community character. The character of the commercial district and the DOD is in fact commercial and residential, and residential uses side by side in harmony. I would point out, interestingly, that single and two-family homes are prohibited in the B2 zoning district. Indeed, there's no historic pattern
Pretty good, I'm in a Zoom meeting.
I'm sorry. That's all right. Indeed, there are no historic patterns in the DOD or anywhere in Newburyport, which suggests that a commercial building should try to disguise itself as a residential structure. Traffic, parking and public access. Ron's addressed this traffic analysis and I think that we could address them later if necessary. But certainly the parking has met the board's performance standards according to the regulations. The project, and the next item is health. The project will have no negative effect on public health or safety. The next is public services and utilities. Both public water and sewer are provided at the site. It will have a nominal impact on these services. Additionally, as shown in the stormwater report and as Charlie reported and is the peer review manager here confirmed, there actually is improved stormwater runoff from the site. It will be slower and it will be cleaned better than it is today. Land use planning is the second to the last criteria. This proposal is consistent with the 2017 master plan by concentrating economic development in the existing economic centers of the city. By allowing the bank to increase its footprint, it allows the bank to remain a vibrant part of the city's largest and historic economic center. As we have reviewed, the proposal is sensitive to the surrounding area and its historic setting. And the provisions of additional space for the petitioner's bank is consistent with the B2 zoning district. The final criteria for the site plan review is open space and environmental protection. The bank is nearly 37,000 square feet. The addition is being constructed on a paved parking lot. Very limited, if any, open space will be impacted by the proposed addition. There is existing landscaping throughout the property and the front of the property will remain unchanged. The addition has been pulled back from Otis Place, thereby allowing additional landscaping to the street, which is unusual and unheard of in this area of town. Additionally, there will be landscaping along Prospect Street, again, unlike any other property along this portion of Prospect Street or Otis Place. Now I'm going to go to the special permit criteria. As you're aware, under the DOD, the applicant has to meet the special permit criteria in general, as well as the specific special permit criteria for the DOD. And interestingly, of course, the special permit criteria in general mostly focuses on use. So I won't dwell entirely too long on it, but I think it bears comment and is important for the legal requirements, as you know. So the first criteria is whether or not the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations. Of course, the bank use is a by right use, namely retail services. Certainly, the city knew quite well what it was doing when it classified banks and insurance companies as retail services under the ordinance. Because at the time the ordinance was created, there were three independent banks, two independent insurance companies, all located in the B2 zoning district. Second is the requested use is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Again, the use of retail services, namely banking, is by right. It is certainly desirable to have banking services and similar business services in the heart of the business district in town. Indeed, I note again, in the 2017 master plan, it encourages growth in the existing downtown to prevent sprawl and allow the downtown to continue to be economically vibrant. Historically, banking, insurance and other similar services have served as the backbone to support the more transient retail services and support restaurants and businesses which require foot traffic generated by retail services such as banking, insurance and governmental offices. Fourth criteria is the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. I will not repeat what Ron has said here on this point, except to say, based upon his review, the use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. We will have 13 surface parking spaces, one more than that are current. And there will be 47 spaces indoors. The bank will provide a total of 60 parking spaces. Five, the requested use will not overload any of the public services such as drainage, water or sewer. And as noted by the engineers, the peer review engineer and the city engineer, that none of those items will be negatively impacted by this use or the increase or the construction of the addition. The sixth is, are there any special regulations for use set forth in the special permit table? And there are none. The seventh is that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to health or welfare. This criteria addresses use, though not the construction of the addition. However, the DOD special permit criteria does address the addition, which I will address momentarily. The use of the bank is allowed by right. It's not part of this application. I remind the board I remind the board of the definition of the B2 district in the ordinance. And it says, quote, "The downtown business district is composed of all those areas so designated on the official zoning map. It includes retail, service and office use. The scale is intended to reinforce the downtown's role as the focus of activity in Newburyport." End quote. This proposed use and addition falls squarely within the definition of the B2 district under the ordinance. The eighth criteria is that the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use, or that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Again, we're not talking about an addition of the use here, but this use is allowed by right and it's what exists on the property today. The ninth is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Again, the use is allowed by right, is entirely consistent with the definition in the B2 district. And finally, that the proposed use will not be conducted in a manner so as to omit any dangerous, nauseous or injurious or other matters. And of course, the bank use will not do any of these objectionable activities. Finally, as to the DOD special permit criteria. The first criteria of the DOD special permit is that the proposal is reversible. In this case, as Chip and Christopher and Judith has pointed out, the proposed addition, if it were to be removed, would not remove the essential form or integrity of the overall historic building and it would not be impaired. So certainly, the addition is reversible and the application meets that criteria. The second criteria includes three subparts. The second criteria says that for new construction, that it is compatible with the existing historic buildings and structures within the DOD. And specifically, that the alteration or new construction does not disrupt the essential form or integrity of the subject historic building, structure or exterior architectural features. We have shown that the proposed addition does not distract from the original historic building and is in fact, set back away from it and appears to be a separate building from the original building. The second is that it will not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the lot where it is located. Here, the surface parking lot is empty and is not historic. It doesn't have a building on it. The fact that it's a parking lot is not historic. And historically speaking, empty lots do not exist in the downtown or the B2 zoning district. Indeed, this board and the city generally has placed surface parking lots out of view and behind historic buildings. The construction of a building on this portion of the property is historically appropriate and will not disrupt the district. The final part of the second criteria is that the proposed addition will not disrupt the essential form and integrity of its setting within the DOD. So the question becomes, what is the setting within the DOD? And what does the City of Newburyport zoning ordinance say about this location? The bank has undertaken a painstaking review of the architectural features, massing and scale, not only of State Street, but the surrounding streetscape of Prospect, Otis and Garden Street. The addition has been redesigned to reflect these areas, patterns and structures as a whole. The setting is also the zoning and what historically the zoning has and does allow and require. Our zoning actually encourages harsh transitions, harsher than what the bank is proposing. We have the B2 district, including the northern side of Garden Street and the western side of Otis Place against the R3 district. Keep in mind, the BT district does not allow single and two-family homes. The B2 district permits by right, full lot coverage, no setbacks, forty feet in height. This is placed immediately adjacent to the R3 district, where ten and twenty-foot setbacks are required. Roof heights are thirty-five feet. This is the historic zoning pattern. This is the historic development pattern. This has been our historic, this has been our zoning for decades. And this is our zoning today. Importantly, the city council, a couple of years ago, downzoned much of the city. They did not change these transitions from one district to the next, although they could have. In fact, even under the proposed zoning rewrite, which has been going on for several years, this same pattern, this same transition or lack thereof, from one district to the next, is not proposed to be changed. Development patterns over time are not static. It's not only what exists today, but what has occurred in the past. What the bank is proposing not only falls well within the historic zoning and development patterns, it also reflects the architectural patterns, including openings, fenestrations and massings of the surrounding residential neighborhood as a whole. You have received information, as I'm sure you will hear, about the Form G for Prospect Street. The Form G notes the historic nature of the homes and the people who likely occupied the homes that exist on Prospect Street. Nothing that is being proposed will diminish the character of those homes or the streetscape of which they are a part and the bank is a part. Indeed, what is proposed is appropriate and proportional for the commercial lot across from them. So the term compatible, which is in this first criteria, means capable of existing in harmony together. So what I'd like to do is, Andy, if you could go to the next slide. This next slide I'm going to show you is Prince Place. And this is an example in the DOD of how you have commercial buildings that are three stories high, four stories high, against wood frame buildings. And if you were on the other side of the library here, on Harris Street, where the Women's Crisis Center is, you would see the same transition. In fact, interestingly, as Judith noted, the YMCA was on that corner before, right up against that building where the current library is against that building that begins the string of those historic wood frame structures. If you could go to the next slide, Andy. Here also is an example, not in the DOD, but in our city, where this pattern is typical. Where you have commercial development, you have the manufacturing building, the cotton mills over on the Monroe Street area against wood frame homes across the street. This is a three-story building exposed two and a half. Andy, if you could go to the next one. Here we have the James Steem Mill on Charles Street. This is a four-story building on the opposite side, wood frame housing, worker housing, described similarly on the Form G for the Prospect Street housing as well. And if you could go to the next street, next slide, Andy. So this is Salem Street, which is much more narrow than Charles Street, but it's the opposite side of the James Steem Mill. Again, you have a four-story building against worker housing or wood frame housing on Salem Street. And if you were to travel down both Charles Street and Salem Street further, you would have simple wood frame housing on both sides of the street, similar to what is going to hopefully happen on Prospect Street. And if you could go to the next slide, Andy. This is a particular instance, this is the Tannery, this is Independence Street. And again, you have the commercial manufacturing building, three-story brick building, right across the street from wood frame housing. These are actually of an older era than some of the houses on Prospect Street. But you have the same development pattern. These are the examples of commercial buildings existing in harmony with wood frame housing throughout the city, indeed in the DOD and elsewhere. You'll see this development pattern. The proposed addition does not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the bank in its setting. So what I'd like to do, Andy, if you could go to the next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over for closing to Christopher.
Thank you very much, if everyone can hear me. One of the things that really struck to me when I started helping the bank here is that while in this presentation, you've heard a lot about setbacks and eve heights and all that. You know, the important thing here is character in appropriateness. And as someone who does not live in Newburyport, but has visited a number of times, it is clear to me why I keep coming back. The reason I keep coming back is that there is, there is a scale and delight to the entire city that is unique. Almost no other Massachusetts town has been able to keep its character as intact as Newburyport. And there is not anyone who believes that it should stay intact anymore than the people at the bank here. And altogether, we've been looking at pictures just like this one, just like this, which makes Newburyport so unique, where, where commercial buildings and small-scale wood frame buildings come in contact with each other and they come in contact in each other in very harmonious and delightful ways. Are the floor-to-floor heights the same from building to building? The answer is no. The floor-to-floor heights on the building on the right is much, much higher than the floor-to-floor heights on the building on the left that seems to be a home. But when you're taking care of things like proportional shapes of windows, divided lights, making sure that things like sills and projecting details are included, cornice lines, as you see down further down the street. This is the kind of delightful moment that makes Newburyport so unique and why people like myself want to keep coming back here. It's stepping back in time to a time where things like this happen. This kind of situation doesn't happen in any other urban environment. If you go to the next slide, Andy, please. But if we go back to what is being proposed, given that context of those delightful moments within Newburyport, where a commercial building and a small wood frame building come together, this is what's being proposed. And you know, the examples that were just shown in the last four or five slides are relatively large buildings. I believe this building allows that intersection to happen between the neighborhoods and the commercial in a very quiet way, at a scale that's completely appropriate, if not, if not trying to mesh almost directly with the scale. So I would, I would ask the, I would ask the board here to look at it in that context of reknitting together a fabric that has existed certainly since the mid eighteen hundreds, in that Newburyport seems to be a steward of. And this building is going to continue to agree with that stewardship.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. With that, Madam Chair, the applicant requests that the board approve its site plan review application that has met those criteria and that it grant a DOD special permit to allow the construction of the addition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we move on, I want to go through the process we're going to continue with for the rest of the evening. The next presentation will be a brief review by the Chair of the Historical Commission of their revised report. After that, we will hold public comments, following which the planning board members will make their comments. And at that point, after all of those comments, we will go back and ask the applicant to respond to the public and planning board comments and enter into a dialogue with the planning board members. And we will wrap up with a planning board direction to the applicant. So we will continue on that process by asking the Chair of the Historical Commission to review their report with us, please.
Thank you, Chair, sound tag. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to be fairly brief and I won't go through the whole report again, which by the way, I don't think of it as, and I didn't label it as a quote revised report. The initial report is as it is. This is, I can, I labeled it a supplemental report based on the materials that were presented by the applicant in the last few weeks or so. Anyway, so just by brief introduction, for those who aren't familiar with what went on, the Historical Commission did initially review the project back in February and issued that report. And, but more recently, the planning board requested that we look at the more recent materials and see what our opinion was on these and see if we wanted to, you know, have any new commentary regarding these changes. At the, at our hearing, I want to respond to a couple of things Attorney Mead said. I felt we were very careful to be fair. I think that, in fact, one of our members actually was rebuked by a member of the public for speaking at such length at the great reputation of the bank and how they deserve a fair shake. That, and I think anyone that listens to the recording of that meeting will, would agree that the applicant was certainly treated fairly and we tried to be fair and objective in our comments. I think it is fair to say that some of the, maybe the editorial comments in the paper and so on may have, may have gone beyond what the bank sees as justifiable, you know, criticism, but you know, I'm not going there. We tried to keep ourselves constrained to reviewing what our facts, as Mr. Jones pointed out, and weighing what we were seeing against what the DOD ordinance requires. And to the, another comment made about, another way we tried to be fair was, one of our members did recuse himself. He is not strictly in a butter, but in the neighborhood and had written a letter to the paper and so on. So he did not participate in the deliberation for the, for this particular thing. The other relatively new member has been around long enough to have seen all these materials and has made a study of them. And I don't see anything either in the law or in common sense that would prohibit him from participating in looking at these more recent materials and offering a comment. And I believe he may be offering a brief comment tonight. That's Joe Morgan. The vice chair, Patricia Pecnic, is also going to make a brief comment. That's some of the things both Patricia and Joe, along with other members, have done a substantial amount of research and digging and looking at these quote-unquote facts before we arrive at our opinion. And I should just point out that, you know, it's not possible for us to avoid opinions in this case. Just like when a judge makes a ruling in a case, it's called an opinion. He weighs the facts, he weighs what the defense has said, what the prosecution has said, or in a civil case, you know, the complainant, and he renders an opinion. Ms. Mead just rendered an opinion. She said, quote, "Nothing will diminish," unquote, you know, "nothing in this proposal will diminish the streetscape." That's an opinion. It's based on some facts, it's based on the facts of the, what they plan to do and the facts of, you know, the eve heights of the buildings there, the eve heights of the proposal. Those are all facts upon which an opinion may be based. So to say it's too big, well, that's an opinion and it's, I agree, that's, well, you know, why do you say that? What are your facts? So we have tried throughout my report, and I think, so you hear from the other members, we have tried to base our quote opinions on facts and avoid being arbitrary. So having said that, I will also acknowledge that the bank, I'll refer to the applicant as the bank is just easier institution for standings. They have made substantial changes and improvements. I will readily admit that, I think they deserve credit for that. The setbacks in particular on improvement, I think there are some things that even, let me give you a couple of examples, the bays. It's true that a lot of the surrounding buildings almost all have these bays. It was very typical of the Victorian era, where that latter half of nineteenth century when those were built. The bays on the bank, that's an interesting nod to that vernacular. But there, because of the fact that that first floor is so high, because of the parking structure inside, they're outsized. And Andy, if you could go to, I think it was drawing three point two, I made a note of that when someone else was presenting. On that drawing, you can kind of see the, you know, this kind of relationship of the bays on the addition versus the bays that are more typically on the houses. So I'm not saying, you know, for me to say, they're, quote, "They don't look good." That's an opinion. And I'm not even saying that. I'm just saying that they're, they look a bit odd. And that is because they are a bit odd, because the window heights and the height of the bay is necessarily unusual because of the first floor height of the building is unusual. And that is obvious, that is a fact. There's no getting around that. So we do try to base these various opinions we have on facts such as that. I appreciate Ms. Selman's remarks and I agree with pretty much most of what she said. And that the standards do require interpretation, as she rightly points out. And they have, those interpretations have changed over time, quite correct. And those, again, a lot of those interpretations are another example of quote opinions, unquote. The, so in the, in the supplemental report, I tried very hard, just as I am tonight, trying to separate what might be my opinion versus what was the concern. what was the consensus of the board. I think there was no question that the members of the board who were involved in the discussion strongly viewed, saw the serious problems, and we also offered some thoughts as to how some of them might be mitigated. And I, I, you know, stand by that conclusion, notwithstanding the fact that it is an improvement, it is much better. I just think that we could still, you know, do a little bit better. One last comment on Attorney Mead's final remarks. She used a phrase, having a, well, one thing she said was, the site of the building is in a business zoned lot, which is 100% true. And she, she said, quote, "adjacent to the other businesses downtown." Well, that's not quite true, is it? Because the State Street building is adjacent to the businesses downtown on State Street, but this addition is adjacent to a residential area. So while it's true that it's on a commercial zone lot, it's also true that it's in commonsensical terms in a residential area. It's like a peninsula that just senses residential area. Now, does that mean you can't put a commercial building there? No, I, I don't think anyone would argue that. I wouldn't. But it does mean you need to be sensitive to that context. In the report, we tried to present a couple of ideas that might help it be even a bit more sensitive. And I think by suggesting the use of clavoured siding, that was, I think that was what was referred to as trying to disguise it as residential. I don't look at it that way. I don't think anyone would mistake it for a residential building. It's not a question of disguising it. It's obviously going to be a commercial building, but we could make it, you know, just a bit less of a jarring transition between, like if you look at the, what Andy is showing now, the house next door and the bank, the proposed addition. And in this one, you can see really how, how the cornet, the height of the cornice, which is by the way, is a rather prominent cornice, which draws the eye even more to the height of the building, how that really only draws more attention to the contrast in height between that building and the building next door, which, yeah, admittedly, it's, it's a residence, it's not real high, but you can see there that kind of contrast, which we thought, there could be things done to, you know, to mitigate that somewhat, like, again, on this, if there was some way of accentuating a height that, that was more in line with the eve heights, that house next door on Otis Place is probably a little lower than most of the average there, so maybe not that height, but something, you know, just lower than that where the cornice is now, and even just a small setback might go quite a long ways towards reducing that sensation. And, and even in that last, in fact, good, this is a good one to switch to Andy. Thank you. By accident, actually, no, if you can find the one that looks down Purchase Street, the houses on the right, which form that row, that attorney will face his last name's Chris, forget his last name referred to, and then the addition is on the left. Okay, this is a little bit further down, but this is fine. You can see how I lost my, I lost the caboose to that train of thought, I'm afraid. But the, 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 oh, I know what it was, how the, all those houses, even though they do, are more or less in alignment with zero setback, again, 100% true fact. They, there's a lot of ins and outs, differentiations in colors and textures and all that kind of stuff. So it is broken up somewhat. None of them, the, the brick addition, it really has just this, it still kind of has that solid brick wall effect, which I personally think, again, my opinion, but I think based on the facts of the case, gives that impression of, you know, that massive impression that we're trying to avoid, even though, you know, maybe it's not as massive as, as I, as people want to think. And now I remember what the one comment I'm going to make, so I don't, last point, I promise, sorry, Andy, on that drawing 3.2, if you go back to that. A lot has been said about the relative size en massing and so on, and how, especially from the State Street perspective, it's, it's hardly noticeable. Okay, but yeah, if you look at, if you just look at the top rendering here, it's, it's pretty obvious. I think that the size of the addition compared to the old building and the 80s addition, it's big, all right? So I think to say that it's quote large, that's a fact. To say it's too large, well, yes, that's an opinion. And that's something that frankly, I don't envy you, planning board members, to having to sort this out. I think you have a difficult decision, a lot of conflicting goals between parking and everything else. I wish you the best of luck, but I, you know, I thought we did the best we could to render what we thought might be helpful comments to you, and I wish you good luck in finding a good solution. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Glenn Richards. We will now move into public comment. I want to give a few introductory guidelines for everybody who will be speaking. First of all, remember that the planning board members have read all the letters posted on the website prior to this meeting. We do want to hear from you and what you have to say. So please restrict your comments, though, to what we are here to review, and that is the application materials that were presented tonight and have also been posted on the website. Another piece of advice that I've given to other public hearing commenters in the past, if someone has already stated what you have to say, you may simply say that you agree with the previous speaker or, or speakers about whatever it is and not repeat what was already said. Again, planning board members are interested in everything you have to say. If you have concerns about the project, we would appreciate hearing what you would prefer to see about this proposal, or at least what you might be able to live with. If you haven't thought about that, it's fine, but we really would be curious to hear how it might work for you in your neighborhood or in the bigger picture of Newburyport. And as Director Port has, was going to put up here, please state your name, your address, and limit your comments to two minutes. Leah McGovern will be our timekeeper and she will call time. And at that point, we expect you to just wrap up your comments so we can move on to the next person. And Director Port will be identifying people to speak, and I'll let him take over from, on that.
Thank you, Chair. Sound tag. So for the record, my name is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development, and I'm also the technical Zoom host for tonight's meeting. We do have a number of attendees this evening, more than is typical for a planning board meeting, whether virtual or in person. So for the convenience of all those in attendance, I'm sure a number of you don't always attend these meetings. I'm just going to clarify how the process of so-called virtual public comment will proceed here using the Zoom platform, which we've obviously moved to because of the COVID pandemic. A slide is on the screen, and I'm going to keep that up there to supplement what I'm explaining verbally. Zoom has a built-in feature, a button that looks like a hand labeled with the words raise hand. The button in the Zoom application is most likely located in the bottom of your screen, although details may vary depending on which computer or operating system you're using, and how you may have chosen to view, view the Zoom meetings within the application itself. If you don't see the raise hand icon or the text, you may need to move your mouse down to the bottom of your screen, at which point the icon and button should appear. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment should click the raise hand button, and we can see that a few folks have done that already, which will typically highlight or change color, notifying us as staff and the planning board members here of your interest in speaking. So I'll announce the name of each speaker in sequence, going down our list here, by your Zoom name or your ID on Zoom, as it has been entered into Zoom. So please keep that in mind. At this time, you should see a pop-up notification on your screen indicating that you specifically have been allowed to speak or that you have been allowed or asked to unmute yourself. For anyone connecting to this meeting, hearing via phone rather than a computer or mobile device, you may be appearing on our list as simply a phone number or the, essentially the phone number you've been calling from. Those calling in may be able to indicate your interest by pressing the key sequence star nine on your phone. Again, the key sequence is star nine. This, like the raise hand button in Zoom application, may similarly notify staff and planning board members of your interest in speaking. To be sure that we've given all callers a chance to speak, I may also identify callers by the first or last few digits of your, your phone number while unmuting and allowing you to speak in turn. We'll typically deal with those folks towards the end of the meeting or end of the public comment period for efficiency and convenience. When allowed to speak, please be sure to unmute yourself accordingly on your end of the Zoom application or the phone, whichever is applicable. Each person, as the Chair indicated, will be given two minutes to speak, in fairness to all others in attendance this evening. But ask that you be respectful of this time limit and be respectful to all others in attendance. Please, when you give your comments, I begin by identifying yourself for the record by name and address, followed by whatever comments you wish to offer. This is necessary for our note taker and for our meeting minutes. It will likely take some time to get to the public comments this evening, so we'd ask that everybody have patience. There are some inherent delays in the process of muting and unmuting each person as we go in sequence. When your public comment is complete or your two minutes are up, we will move on to the next person. As, as the Chair had indicated, I would remind everyone to keep your comments brief and on point with the subject matter that's being presented and reviewed this evening. In this case, the proposed plans for expansion at the Institution for Savings Bank on State Street. So with that, I will move to the first person that we have who's expressed interest in speaking this evening on our list, Dave Tivitts. You are being allowed to speak and unmute yourself if you'd like.
Am I here?
Yes, if you could speak a little louder, I think we can hear you.
Terrific. Andy, thank you very much, Chair. Sound tag and members of the planning board, thank you very much. I am a, speaking in very strong support of this proposal by the Institution for Savings. In full disclosure, I am a customer of many years standing, a corporator many years standing, and a trustee of many years standing. I also, also am the only person, I'm sure, who's here listening tonight, or I shouldn't say I'm sure, more than likely, the only person who actually lived at 14 Prospect Street, the site of the now parking lot where there once was back until 1984, a, a housing unit, and I had one of the apartments there, which was owned by the bank. So I've also been a tenant of the bank in addition to many years later becoming a trustee. So I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. And after I lived there, by the way, then I moved over to Orange Street, right around the corner, and, and am extremely familiar with the South End neighborhood with Prospect Street, Prospect Street on this place. So many, I can't tell you the countless times that I've walked my various golden retrievers down those streets. So I'm very familiar with it. I think the bank has done an exemplary job of responding to the, to neighborhood concerns, to historic commission concerns, while still trying to make, to keep a building large enough and useful enough to meet the bank's growing needs. It's, the bank has been enormously successful. Other people have spoken before about the incredible generosity of the bank. I won't go into that. I think that's already well-known by everyone. And what's, it's important with this issue before you tonight is it is the bank, as Council, Council Mead has pointed out, is the bank meeting the, all the criteria necessary for approval by the planning board? I think the bank has done that. I think they've bent over backwards in many cases. I think the revised design is substantively better, is an improvement over the original.
It's been two minutes.
Okay. And so with that, I'll wrap up. And again, thank you very much. I support the bank's efforts and, and I appreciate the planning board's deliberation and consideration of the facts.
The next person we have is Jeff Caswell.
Can you hear me, Andy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, members of board. Jeff Caswell, I own two historic buildings downtown. I'm in a butter of 70, 80 State Street, right adjacent to the bank. The bank's in the B2 district and owning businesses myself. I know you need to grow with your demand. And what they're proposing by right, they're actually asking for way less than they can actually get. I understand the people in R3 are upset, but it seems to me it'd be almost like the members of people in B2 district enforcing an R3 district look like a business district. It's a business district. They need to expand, need a service to customers they have. And I just want to keep it short and favorable. They have it right, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. The next person we have on our list is Gary Corelles.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Andy. Gary Corelles, I live in San Diego, California. I own two apartment houses at 1517 and 1921 Prospect Street, directly across from the bank's parking lot in the corner of Otis Place, as well as others in the immediate area. Many of the trustees have commented publicly on what the bank has done for the communities it serves. I moved to Newburyport in 1973 and have watched the bank for many years. I do not dispute the good that the bank has done for all of the towns that it serves. I do dispute the method in which the expansion plan is being presented and wonder if the concerns of dozens of neighbors, abutters, and owners of property in the area are being adequately addressed. I'm concerned with the current plan of the bank expansion for a number of reasons. The expansion initially will bring noise, collusion, increased traffic, all leading to the permanent issues of the overall height of the structure, the air circulation in which a tunnel will be created with airflow, the elimination of views and the blocking of natural light. The loss of light will make living spaces darker, the streets darker, and with dark and loss of sunlight, more energy needed to heat in the winter. The increased size of the HVAC systems will bring even more noise than now. There'll be more traffic at the beginning and end of the days with more employees and cars using the parking garage. The early morning already poses traffic issues. The noise created by people using the garage to park and retrieve cars cannot be determined, and it is not enough to read in the ad for the garage lift that it is quiet. I also ask that you vote against the proposed site plan as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. The next person we have is Peter Mac, Peter Mackin. Peter, have you unmuted yourself on your end?
I think that's it. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Peter Mackin. My wife, Maureen, and I live at 13 Prospect. We're directly across the street from the proposed garage entrance of this new building. And the neighborhood had asked me to sort of give an overview, so it may be a minute longer here. Thank you in advance for your research, your review of our letters and your consideration. We appreciate that. We appreciate the bank coming back with another proposal and their latest work on that. We heard tonight a lot of bank opinions. And I would just say that this, the nature of a Zoom meeting is kind of awkward, distinctly disadvantaged for the number of, of neighbors trying to participate. Back in January, when we were surprised by this, the planning group asked us to work directly with the bank. The bank has made no effort to work directly with the neighbors here. They've built their, want to build their massive addition and dwarf the neighbors around them. And this is going to permanently transform what is a quaint historic neighborhood with this massive addition that's not going to benefit anyone but the institution. It certainly doesn't benefit the neighbors on the backside of their property, and it's going to change the nature and the environment for this area in a way that I don't think people want it. We found that the bank has been a number of times misleading. This, you know, just even the title of this being 93 State, it isn't, it's 14 Prospect, it's on the back end. They've, they've had incorrect measurements, they've had missing measurements. We, they, they have told us that, that they could not put parking underground because there was ledge, only to find out now that they will. And the question is, why not put all the parking underground and have it be a one-story building? Just tonight, the description of, of the homes on Prospect Street of being a wall of homes without spaces in between is, is not a truthful statement. There are driveways in between.
It's been two minutes.
Okay. My primary objections is the mass, the scale, and the height. A 30-foot-high building, a third of a football field wide, dwarfs and overpowers everything, will make it a tunnel on Prospect Street, and it will look like Prince. I don't think the character of Newburyport should be the way that Prince and Independence Street look. They look like alleys. And it is totally out of character.
You need to wrap it up. It's been two minutes. It's been over two minutes.
Okay, so much for the overview. I'd like to turn it over to our lawyer. We have a legal, an attorney that represents us. His name is Bill Sheehan, and we turn it over to him next.
Well, we're going easy here this evening because I believe he's on the list and we would get to him in turn.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Peter. The next person we have is Mary Williamson.
Good evening, Andy. Mary Williamson, I'm speaking on behalf of Anna Dicks Hospital, 25 Highland Avenue in Newburyport. In a letter dated March 13th of this year, Mark Oldstein, President of Anna Dicks, went on public record with the planning board in support of the Institution for Savings facility expansion at State Street. Tonight, the hospital reaffirms the support for the application. For 200 years, the Institution for Savings has been a strong, steady and reliable civic-minded partner with a commitment to local heritage and to building a vibrant community, be that through its banking operations that buoy local commerce or through residential lending that allow families to build a future here. Like Anna Dicks, the Institution for Savings has grown to become a very large regional employer and at times has needed to expand its physical footprint to better serve the needs of its customers. Anna Dicks supports their inherent rights to do this within the B2 district in support of all necessary permits and approvals. The bank's many offices, now probably 21 locations strong across a wide geography, vary in size and design. Each meet the business needs of its customers in a way unique and fitting to the setting. One can see these sound architectural choices in Salisbury Square, Rockport, Topsfield, Salem, and most recently in Amesbury. This application within a district zone for commercial enterprise will help the bank grow and thrive. And as it does, its ability to foster local investment and community involvement will also grow. We support this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. The next person we have on our list is Patricia Peknik. I believe she's also the vice chair of our local historical commission.
Yes, Patricia Peknik for Dow Street. Adherence to the secretary's standards is a legal requirement under the DOD ordinance. The secretary's standards are about the total impression new construction will make in the neighborhood and historic district setting. Standard 1 references the building's site and environment. Standard 9 refers to the historic integrity of the environment. The Department of the Interior's guidance on new additions to mid-sized historic buildings refers to the historic setting and how additions affect the district in which the building is located. Reading broadly across all National Park Service briefs on preservation and rehabilitation as the DOD ordinance requires, the Department of the Interior continually emphasizes the need to protect the historic setting in context of a property, the historic relationship between buildings, and explains that the standards encompass the other surrounding historic buildings in the district. They require the preservation of the scale of the neighborhood setting and context. Prospect Street from state to Otis has been listed since its 1973 Mass Historical Commission Form A was written as part of a residential district worthy of preservation. The brief on additions in densely built neighborhoods describes difficulty of designing an addition that will have the least impact on the historic district. This is a high-impact plan because in addition, two and a half times the volume of the historic building is not subordinate, and the nonhistoric additions to the building would be three times the volume of the 1871 building. Finally, it is not sufficient for the project to comply with dimensional zoning regulations because adherence to federal preservation standards is also required by the DOD zoning ordinance. A DOD project does not comply with zoning if it does not comport with the standards, and this project in its scale by the numbers does not comply. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. Next person we have is Tim Whacker.
Yes, thank you very much for letting me speak. My wife and I, Laura, live at 13 Otis Place. We've been there for just a little bit over a year now. Enjoy it greatly. In listening to the comments today and trying to read as much of the application as I could, it seems that there has been an important element in all of the planning here that has been omitted and certainly in all of the photos and the renderings. You don't see the cars that line both sides of the streets on both Otis, I should say, on Garden, Otis and Prospect. It's not uncommon, in particular where we are, right at the foot of Garden, to see a moving van or some sort of a delivery truck literally just stop in the middle of the road for whatever period of time and just completely block access to Otis. Correspondingly, down at the end of Otis where it intersects with Prospect, the cars are almost always on both sides of the street, making it virtually impossible for an emergency vehicle to access Otis. And should there be a concomitant occurrence of the blockage that I referred to about on Garden and then at Prospect and Otis, that presents a real public safety problem that has not been addressed here. And I think that it's incumbent on the planning board to reconsider a complete and more detailed traffic study that may address this. I would also like to, if I can, address Mr. Jones's remarks about, this is, as he said, this project is vital to the growth and stability of the bank. IFS has been growing for a long period of time to the point where three-quarters of its operations, or at least its deposits, are outside of the city. Mr. Jones, you have 14 different branches, one right on the other side of town. Can you please explain to me how not building in one of those areas, or should I say, building in this area, will ensure the growth and stability of the bank in a way that would not be secured in one of these locations? I'm done. Thank you very much, and I hope the planning board or someone there can address my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Next we have is Cindy Johnson.
I don't give you much time. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Andy, and thank you, planning board. My name is Cindy Johnson. I live at 99 Lime Street in an 18th century home in the heart of our densely settled South End. I've served eight years on the school committee, and I also served six years on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm currently trustee of the Institution for Savings. And I'd like to speak in strong favor of our addition, but more importantly, in support of our downtown businesses. In the almost 40 years I've lived and worked here, I've seen how hard our residents and local officials worked to make our downtown thrive. A key component of this is zoning. Clear zoning guidelines allow property owners to plan for the future and use their property effectively. After all, who would invest in a property without knowing how they could use it? Conversely, zoning allows the city to designate where commercial activity should take place. That is, not on Lime Street, for example. Although many parts of our downtown are but residential areas, as the IFS property does, they are zoned commercial. And I believe eroding this distinction is a hazard to the future well-being of our downtown. People who choose to live near downtown can enjoy walking to town and being part of a lively business district. I know, I certainly have. They can enjoy property values supported by a healthy mix of residential, industrial and business activities in Newburyport. And if they choose to live next to or in an area zoned commercial, they should expect that their neighbor will be able to use that property for the B2 zoning. The IFS has been, and I hope always will be, a valuable part of our downtown. And as Mr. Griffin stated, the IFS has been a good neighbor. I believe this hearing has shown the effort the IFS has made to make this addition fit in, not as tall as it could be, not as close to the street as it could be, and in keeping with the neighborhood. And I thank you and urge you to support this project.
Thank you, Cindy. Next person we have is Brian Zampell.
Thanks, Andy. Brian Zampell, I'm a resident at 3 William Griffin Way. I also operate businesses at 359 Stanley Tucker Drive and also 17 Malcolm Hoyt Drive. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I think Newburyport, as a resident and as a business operator, should be committed and should be proud of every business in its community, especially the ones that can thrive, especially a business like Institution for Savings that has remained so committed to staying in Newburyport, keeping its corporate office here despite its dramatic growth. In my opinion, I think this expansion is well within the local codes and regulations, and it offers an aesthetic improvement to downtown. As a member of the business community, I think we're all watching this project closely because we see it as a signal from the city in terms of how you view business in this town. And in closing, I'd also like to say that any business right now who can grow and expand in the midst of COVID-19 is not only exceptional, but it's something that we need to be supporting as a city. And that's how I feel as both a resident and as a business operator. So I'm speaking in support. I think you need to know that the business community is looking to you to kind of continue what we need to be doing as a city. So, thank you.
Let me just say one thing here, Andy. And may I?
Please.
I want to reiterate my comment earlier, my guidance for everybody to please speak to the application in front of us and the details that were presented tonight. And that will help get us through and also help the planning board members to know specifically what people have to say about the details of that application. Thank you.
Okay, the next person we have on the list, I believe, is Bill Sheehan.
Thank you, Andy. My name is Bill Sheehan. I practice law in PVD, Massachusetts. And tonight I'm representing the Shirets at 16 Prospect Street and Thomas Accino and Colleen Turner Accino at 15 Otis Place. With only two minutes, I wanted to address the issue of parking. The proposal does not satisfy the parking requirements of the ordinance. The applicant acknowledges that presently there's 12,560 square feet of gross floor area in the existing building. The applicant has, in a June 5, 2020, letter to the zoning administrator, attached calculations of gross floor area for the addition. The gross floor area, according to the attachment, is 8,454 square feet. When you add that square footage together with the existing square footage, you have over 21,000 square feet. 66 spaces would be required. Keep in mind, please, that when you're looking at gross floor area, it's not net floor area, which is what you've been told you should consider, 7,200 some odd. The ordinance talks of gross floor area, not net floor area. Also, when you're talking about a retail use, you are going to calculate parking based on units of three spaces per 1,000 square feet. It is measured in increments of 1,000 square feet. When you have something over 21,000 square feet and less than 22,000 square feet, you need three spaces per 1,000 square feet. That is 66 spaces. There are only 60 spaces, although I confess I haven't been able to find the 60th space, but assuming that it's there, nonetheless, it is short. In addition, please note our letter of May 28, 2020, where I go into great detail. Where I go into great detail on the parking issue. Because the parking requirements are not met, this board must, with all due respect, deny the applications as sought. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The next person we have is, and I apologize if I mispronounce his name, but Claire Papinastu. And you will need to unmute yourself on your end. Claire, are you able to unmute on your end? If you aren't, we might circle back to someone else and then return to you if perhaps you're having some sort of technical issue.
Hello. Hi.
Hi, we can hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Apologies for... So you have both of us, actually. We are abutters at 4 Otis Place. My husband had connectivity issues upstairs with his computer, so we're both at mine, so that's why you see my name. So, Mark, why don't you go first?
So, hi, this is Mark Griffin. I live at 4 Otis Place, madam chair, members of the board. Please note, I'd like to first respond to Mike Jones's statement and, you know, kudos to him for pointing out that I should have known that the bank would try to build in the parking lot. I actually did know, but I couldn't have predicted that the bank would not give me a heads-up about the expansion plans. I was, after all, a corporator and your neighbor. So anyway, I would have known that had you told me. Thank you very much, Mike. Mr. Jones characterizes abutter opinions with respect to size, massing and aesthetics as if they are not part of legal requirements. This is not the case. Aspects of the project are within the board's discretionary permit granting authority. He also says that if you were to take into account the abutter opinions, you must also consider how the bank has contributed to the community. This is the false comparison. This is not within the board's discretionary permit granting authority as the quality of the applicant has nothing to do with the project itself, which is what the planning board is considering. First, with respect to qualitative part of the plans, I am in complete agreement with the Newburyport Historical Commission advisory report and the supplemental report recently filed. In its initial advisory report, the NHC noted, as one traveled down Prospect Street, the addition quickly grows into a looming monolithic giant that is clearly not subordinate to the existing building, even if one includes the 1980 addition. That was in February. This has not changed. And since the supplemental report, the supplemental report also concludes, "The problem arises when considering the immediate environment along Prospect Street and Otis Place. There, the addition still looms large and appears intrusive due to the combination of its actual size, compounded by materials and designs that are in sharp contrast with those of neighboring structures."
It's been two minutes.
It has, but they had an hour and a half. No.
No, Mark, I'm sorry. Everybody gets two minutes. That's it.
Actually, there's two of us here, so can I have my wife speak?
Yes.
I also submitted a letter which has legal considerations as well, so I'll have to...
Thank you, and I will be brief. Number one, I do oppose the IFS proposal as it stands now, and I agree 100% with the NHS advisory. As I said before, the bank can do, yet refuses to do better, and I'm just curious as to why. And to answer your question or your requirement, Chair Sontag, what I could live with is actually just a smaller building and something that's a little bit more historically sensitive. That's it. And in terms of, I just do want to pick up on what President Jones said earlier. He said that, you know, we live next to a, quote, "unproductive" surface parking lot. Honestly, that's better than what they're proposing. And also, too, ask yourself, what does that mean, "unproductive"? So I'm just curious as to why they're just so adamant about having a building that is so massive and so insensitive to their neighbors, yet they say they really care about the community, which I know they do. But I'm just very curious about what's driving this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mark. Next person we have is Lloyd Hamm. And Lloyd, you'll need to unmute yourself on your end as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I have a couple of comments, and with great respect to...
Excuse me, could you please give your name and your address before you start?
I'm sorry. My name is Lloyd Hamm. I'm the CEO of Newburyport Bank, which is located at 63 State Street in Newburyport. I have a couple of comments, which are more principles, but I do want to say that I have great respect for both the IFS and many of the neighbors, and many of the neighbors are my friends as well. My issue is that the proposed use is in a B2 commercial district. And I do truly believe that if a business follows established zoning rules, guidelines and makes respectful accommodations and processes and seeks approval, then that approval should be granted. I do hope that we find a solution, and I encourage the planning board to continue to work towards one. And the reason for that, our downtowns are wonderful, especially Newburyports. We should never take customers for granted. New jobs, which bring employees to the downtown, add to the vibrancy and create success on a daily basis. This is going to be particularly important for our hospitality businesses and the food service and retail industries. So I believe if we can find an accommodation here, and I know that the institution is attempting to do that, and I believe the neighbors want that, that we can create something that does add to the downtown and makes... and makes Newburyport even more special than it is today. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Lloyd. Next person we have is Ellen Kalman.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, actually, this is Richard Kalman. Thank you. I am an Ipswich resident, and I am a corporator for the institution, for savings. But I am also a real estate attorney with 25 years' experience appearing before planning boards. So I do understand the considerations and the analysis before you with respect to this project. I thought Mike Jones did a great job tonight giving you a summary of that in his presentation. I really only have two short comments that I had prepared before I turned on tonight. One is the recognition of how unique Newburyport is and New England, where you do have businesses and centuries-old dwellings that have coexisted in downtown forever. And I thought Lisa Mead did a great, credible, credible job of presenting those scenarios that you already have throughout the downtown. But I recognize that any change to the downtown requires a balancing act against, for business and residents, and you should look no further than your master plan. The executive summary on page 1 establishes guiding principles for your Newburyport officials, and the number-one guiding principle is to maintain Newburyport's sustainability, one of those being its economic sustainability. And officials are directed to promote and support the city commercial center. Obviously, approval of this addition would accomplish or follow that guiding principle. And my second comment is that the institution has been rewarded for the dedication and the excellence in serving its communities. Mike Jones has stated it would be his preference that they did not have to expand, but they've been rewarded by their good service. Other local businesses have options to relocate, such as, you know, the Black Cow that did so well, that can simply go find a larger location. But the institution, to maintain the presence of the downtown, must work with the site that it has. And you've heard tonight the major modifications and changes to their initial design, and I think their presentation and their new proposal deserves your utmost consideration.
It's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next person we have is John Leary. John, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Andy, thank you, planning board. My name is John Leary. I live at 23 Broad Street. I'm a 20-year Newport resident. I was born here, so I'm a native as well. I'm also a bank trustee. I fully support the construction of the building. I'm in favor of any effort by the city to support the growth and the success of the downtown Newburyport businesses. I think it's really important, especially given what's going on right now. I think, you know, there's a potential for going through some really difficult times and to have a strong business in the downtown area. I think it's going to be very important. I think the project needs to be approved to allow the bank to continue to grow and succeed in Newburyport. And I really appreciate the board's consideration and the time and effort into this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Next person we have is Colleen Turner.
Colleen, can you hear me?
Yep.
Colleen Turner Caccino. And I have lived at 15 Otis Place for 15 years. By choice, I personally never opted to bank at the Institute for Savings. However, I appreciate that the bank is a contributor to many organizations, and that's great, but not relevant, and also required by the federally mandated Community Reinvestment Act. And the IFS, just like our other two local banks, earns a satisfactory rating, no more, no less. What they're suggesting, though, the reality is, is a 29-foot, 8-inch-high, otherwise referred to as 30 feet in common vernacular, 16,000-square-foot private parking garage. Because I'm pretty sure I've not seen that these spaces will be available for abutters or tourists. It is unacceptable, and it is no way respective of existing and surrounding areas, as the DOD states. It does not belong in our fair city's hard-fought-for, beautiful and historic downtown, now or ever. Here are a couple compromises. One, perhaps, if this much space is needed, give our fair city's industrial parks some new real estate. Or two, I get that this is a bank's property, but you know what? How about you put it at the, where the clock is? Put the clock where Otis and Prospect Street is and put your big brick building with all the other brick buildings on State Street. On behalf of our 80-plus neighbors and myself, I've happily been vocal through this whole process, and I've also been beat up, both directly and indirectly, in the newspaper. But I don't care, because this is my home, and I ask that you vote against this plan as proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Next person we have is Tom Calderjohn. Tom, are you able to unmute yourself on your end? Still not hearing anything from Tom. I'm wondering, we might pass to someone else for just a moment and then circle back. Take a pause there.
Hello?
Yes, Tom, thank you.
Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust, Chair Sontag, and members of the planning board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The trust opposes this newest design for the institution's proposed addition. While we appreciate the bank's efforts to improve their original plan, unfortunately, it falls short of the mark. It remains too large in mass, scale, and proportion. It has a detrimental effect on the historic neighborhood surrounding this lot, and it is not compatible. It does not meet the Secretary of the Interior's standards and is disruptive to the historic building pattern in the DOD. The proposed new building overwhelms the existing wonderful bank building. It is a huge addition, and it detracts from its neighbors. We implore you to revise this plan once again and work with the neighborhood to help ensure a sympathetic, much smaller structure that everyone can support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Next person we have is identified only as owner. Hopefully, you know who you are.
Hi, my name is Cindy, and Cindy Southside, I live at 15 Prospect, number 5. And I've lived here for about eight or nine years now. I moved from Somerville, where I did live in a very congested, high-rise kind of situation. It was horrible, and that's why I came here. And I've been very happy and able to do a lot of things that you can't do in Somerville. And so it's really regrettable that it's going to go back that way. A couple, my main concern is parking. I'm a full-time healthcare worker. I put in probably nine or 10-hour days. And when I come home, if I have to shovel in the middle of winter, that's happened already many times. I cannot imagine what it's going to be like when all this space is taken up. And my other point is just kind of reflects, you know, the... The, on your, on your website, you have the phrase, "We remain true to our vision to positively affect the lives of every person, business, and organization within the communities we serve." Now, if that's true, you will really listen full-heartedly to what the residents are saying. And my other point is, you know, this project began before COVID. So with, the whole world changed and everybody working from home. And right now, that's what I've been doing all these months. And with the noise that happens with the structure, while I continue to work from home, because I can't get into the clinic, do you really need all that office space? The world is a whole different place. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have on our list is Steve and Renee Shiret.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Steve Shiret. My wife Renee and I are close abutters as we live at 16 Prospect Street, on the corner of Prospect and Otis Place, a mere 45 feet from the proposed project. We also own a business located on State Street and wish to voice our opposition as both close abutters and State Street business owners to the institution's expansion project as proposed. We oppose the scale, massing, height, design, and noise emanating from the building services equipment. Our 1880 Italianate home has 11 windows that will directly face a wall of brick and glass. The proposed height is twice the height of the street light currently in our view. We currently hear humming from the generators, which are located several hundred feet away from our home. The noise will undoubtedly be exacerbated and disrupt our quality of life and enjoyment of our property by a monolithic 16,000-square-foot building and garage, the related building services equipment and car lifts located only 45 feet from our home. We entirely agree with the advisory report and supplemental report dated February 18 and June 25, respectively, from the Newburyport Historical Commission. We value their opinion. Specifically, the overall scale, massing, volume, design, lack of harmony, and the contextual inappropriateness of the project in a neighborhood well-recognized locally and by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for its historical significance. Generally, we are in favor of responsible development. As business owners with 17 offices located around the Commonwealth, including our administrative office on State Street, we know that a museum, although nice to archive memorabilia, a gym, also nice to have, showers on-site, once again, a nice luxury, all are not essential to operating a successful business, including a bank. While Historic Commission so accurately pointed out, causing residual harm to the sense of place. Gratefully, in the 1970s, many residents' businesses exercised the courage and the will to do what was right for a wonderful city and thwarted similar modern accessible development. They're hoping for the same.
Okay, thank you, Steve and Renee. The next person we have on our list is Mary Ann Clancy. Mary Ann, are you able to address the board? You do appear to be unmuted, but not hearing anything. Well, take a pause there for a minute. Go to the next person we have on our list, Erin Clausen.
Hello, this is... Excuse me for the feedback there. This is Erin Clausen, 3 Otis Place. To the chair and planning board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak for this virtual meeting. Want to note, and agree with the comment that was made with the applicant's opening remarks, I think it was the architects, that Newburyport is uniquely endowed with historic character. It's unrivaled by many of its peers in the Commonwealth and probably New England. And I think the DOD purpose statement determinations that outline and set the agenda for that zoning ordinance are clear in trying to maintain that. It's clear that it's laying out that legacy, 60-year legacy of historic preservation and is seeking and intending to preserve that going into the future. And within that, none of that is the criteria by which the planning board is making the determination. I just, you know, have submitted two letters to the board for consideration, kind of outlining how I don't believe the application as it's currently proposed meets the criteria, and would refer to the advisory report that was submitted by the Historic Commission. I think they did a spectacular job at articulating the, how the project isn't consistent, is not, is not consistent with the criteria of the DOD. And I think is a compelling argument for why the planning board should consider denying the application as it has been presented now. So with that, I would thank the board for your consideration and ask you to deny it as it has been submitted.
Thank you, Erin. Just ask again if Mary Ann Clancy, if you've been able to unmute yourself, if you'd like to address the board. All right, we'll put a pin in that and circle back. Richard Pollak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
You can hear me? Okay, yeah, hello, my name is Richard Pollak. I own number 1, 3, 5, and 7 Garden Street, which are direct to abutters to the back of the building. Right now, the 1980 building is quite overwhelming to my property, and I can't even grow a good lawn on that side. And now this larger building is going to be just as bad. And I agree with a lot of the things. I have nine tenants in the building, and they do complain quite often to me about the generator and the noise from the air conditioning system. And I imagine what the larger building coming, this massive large building coming in, there's going to be more generation, air conditioning, that's going to, and maybe a larger generator. The generator is right on the lot line, and the air conditioning is on, instead of on the top of the building, it's right on my lot line also. There's limited lighting in my backyard, and it's going to, it's going to continue to be more limited lighting with this massive construction. Well, I'm also concerned about water drainage during heavy rains and the snowmelt. I get a lot of water in my backyard, and I think it's probably because of the parking lot being there. But there is some open space where water can drain on the bank's side of the fence. But I think in the future, with the, with the building being right on my lot line, and I think it's only three feet away, and I think Lisa, the lawyer, said it was going to be six feet away from my fence line. It didn't look like that in the plan. It looked like 36 inches to me. And I'm, again, the character of the neighborhood, we have a historical neighborhood, and, you know, old Victorian houses, and this just doesn't fit in, in my opinion. Again, it's opinion. The building is just too massive. I agree with other people in the neighborhood that are against the massive construction. I think they should be able to make something a little more unique that fits in to the atmosphere of the neighborhood as it is.
It's been two minutes.
That's my two minutes? Boy, that went fast. Okay, thank you very much, board, and I appreciate your listening to my comments. Bye.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Next person we have is Maureen Mackin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Maureen Mackin. I live at 13 Prospect Street with my husband, Peter. I have a few comments I'd just like to make. We have heard of how utmost importance it is to protect the integrity and beauty of the 1870s building. I don't blame the bank for wanting to push the new addition as far away from that building as possible. It's a massive brick monolith that dwarfs everything around it, as seen in the bank's own pictures and renderings. Hearing the comments how the windows and the bays of a brick parking lot somehow blend in with the windows and bays of our homes is laughable. It's also been pointed out again and again that our homes that were built over 200 years ago are very close to the street. We realize that. It wasn't a good decision then, and it's a ridiculous argument for the bank to use now to justify building their garage a lot closer to the street. Showing pictures of Prince Street, Salem Street, Independence Street make our argument even stronger. Why would we want Newburyport to repeat these mistakes? Why would we want Newburyport to repeat these mistakes? Commercial buildings on those streets are not in harmony at all. There is nothing delightful about allowing our residential streets to be devoured by commercial buildings. This plan is too massive for such a small area. It will negatively transform our neighborhood forever. Why can't the bank use a little inventive initiative and put a smaller brick building, one floor, on that property? Why can't they put this large building right on State Street where other large brick buildings belong? Why can't they consider other locations? Why can't they be a little bit more creative? I don't think they're trying hard enough. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Next person we have is Sean Sullivan. And Sean, are you able to unmute yourself on your end?
Hello, Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sorry, that was a bad connection. My name is Sean Sullivan. I live at 9 Prospect Street with my wife Jennifer and my daughter Elle. I object to the Institution for Savings proposal due to its mass, scale, and height. And I ask that you deny this proposal as presented. I'd like to address Mike Jones's uninformed comments in the beginning. I thought long and hard, it's a fact that I thought long and hard about the potential commercial development on the bank's property. It is a fact that I never thought a building with such mass and scale and so out of place would be presented or ever considered for approval. It is a fact my house is a historical house in a historical zone with significant historical interest documented in a Form G, as was said. My house was built in 1870 years before the bank was there, and it was designed to get sun from the south. And this, this proposal is going to block so much of the sun going into the front of my house as it was designed. The tops of my windows are 16 feet tall. And I had submitted a rendering of elevations for your review. And because I think all of the renderings have kind of misled the board as to the actual scale of it. So I hope you'd have a chance to review those. The 16-foot-high windows only go about halfway up this 30-foot structure. It's going to block out so much sun, and especially in the wintertime. It is a fact that this building could be made smaller, lower, or pushed further back from the front of the lot. Ms. Sontag, you had asked a very good question. I could live with any of those options. I don't think the bank has entertained some of these options because I don't think they want to look at it at the front of the, this proposed structure in their line of sight.
Sorry, that's two minutes?
Thank you for your, for your time. I appreciate your opinion on this matter. It, it directly affects my family's well-being. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Next person we have is, on our list is Anne Marie, and I would ask, Anne, yeah, I would ask, Anne, just shifting over to making sure you can speak, I'd just ask you to state your full name and address for the record.
My name's Anne Marie Clausen. I live at 3 Otis Place. And I agree with what my neighbors and our community is stating. Our home will be thrown into darkness by a 29, quote, 29-foot, 8-inch-high solid brick wall. It's very clever, the use of renderings, but I don't feel it's realistic. I could live with one-floor parking garage if needed, but not the way they're proposing. I am in extreme opposition of this proposed parking garage. And I hope you listen to the neighbors and the residents and the community in Newburyport. I'm a special ed teacher. I've been working out of the house since March 12th, March 13th, pardon me, and I don't know how much longer I will be with special needs children. And the noise from the bank will be absolutely ridiculous if, if this goes through. So it's very important to our community, to our society, and the well-being of our, the children of the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. The next person we have on our list is identified only as Sandra. Again, I would ask if you could just give your full name and address for the record.
Sandra Nagler. 13 Prospect Street. I have to agree strongly with Colleen Satino Turner. I agree with Maureen Mackin, Sean Sullivan.
If I could just interrupt for just a second, I apologize. Do you happen to be running two devices at the same time? We're getting a little bit of echo.
Talk on that.
Is that better?
Talk on that.
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Should I start from the beginning?
Please, yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I totally agree with Colleen Satino Turner. I agree with Maureen Mackin and Sean Sullivan. I vehemently oppose this project.
It looks like we lost her there just a moment. I'm not sure exactly why. We'll just circle to the next person on our list and we can return, I think, if need be. Next person we have on our list is Joseph Morgan.
Thank you, Andy. This is Joe Morgan, 55 Hill Street. I'm a member of the Historical Commission, and I was asked to present a couple of numbers that I presented at last week's Historical Commission meeting on the 25th. One of those metrics is the volume for comparative purposes, the volume of the proposed addition. I took, I, I'm using these measurements because it's difficult to really get the sense of the, of the comparative sizes of the original 1871 building and the addition just from NSF net square footage calculations. I think someone mentioned that earlier. So what I did was I took the footprint and I extruded it with the height for both of the buildings. And, and just to make a rather cumbersome calculation, short and clear, is that the, the smaller building at its, at its height of 24 feet, the historical building at its height of 24 feet and at 30 feet in its central part is about 97,000 cubic feet. And the addition, about 8,000 gross square feet per floor times the 30-foot height of the building, the nominal 30-foot height is about 240,000 cubic feet. So that's about a ratio of 2.5. So the addition as proposed is about two and a half times the feature historical building on the site. The other, the other datum that I'd like to mention are the eaves along Prospect. They're really at 21 to 23 feet. I measured those with a laser tool. And the, I find that those are, that, that the, on the proposed addition, the cornice is actually the, the most imposing. It's at 30 feet, significantly higher than that eve. I think we gave some pretty good suggestions to the bank for blending that facade along Prospect and Otis more compatibly with the neighborhood. And I just don't understand why there's so much intransigence. I've never seen that. I really think that there have been, the, the bank has had opportunities to really pluck some low-hanging fruit here and to really be a better neighbor. And I just think for some reason, they just have not wanted to look at the options. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Next person we have on our list is, and actually I just want to circle to Mary Ann Clancy again. See if you're able to unmute yourself and speak.
Yeah, Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Good, I'm going from my phone this time. Mary Ann Clancy, 16 Neptune Street, Newburyport. Lifelong resident of Newburyport. I grew up here. Saw some crazy things going on in my childhood and pretty happy.
Looks like we lost Mary Ann there for a second. I'm not sure. It may have been because of the, the second device there. We'll give a second for her to reconnect. Okay, we'll circle back. Next person we have on our list is identified as Dr. Gs. If you could identify your full name and address from the record.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Kevin Gazarovski. I own Appleton Eye Associates at 39 Green Street in Newburyport. I'm also a trustee of the bank and I am in strong support of the proposed addition. Mine's a little bit more of a personal statement. As I've worked in Newburyport for 28 years, I was able to purchase the practice and the building on Green Street in 2006, and I wanted to work with a local bank that I could work with and I could grow with. And fortunately for me, this occurred because the institution took the initiative of creating their new commercial lending department at that time, you know, recognizing the need for a different type of lending and commercial lending. I believe I might have been even one of the first commercial loans. But with the support of the bank, my practice has grown through the years to four locations. We have five doctors, we have 17 staff. And our Newburyport office has now become the hub of our office. And I've been able to provide meaningful job opportunities and proud to say that four patients of mine have actually gone on to become optometrists because, because they've come through our office and it's like what we've done. My point very simply is, you know, change is difficult, but it's necessary. You know, to provide the opportunities like the ones that I've been given, the bank needs this opportunity to grow, to expand. They have the, they need the necessary space as put forth by the meticulous and thoughtful plans we've reviewed this evening to be able to give businesses like mine the opportunity to flourish. And thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. We will circle back if we can to Mary Ann, but thank you. Next person we have on our list in a moment is Jack Santos. Jack, are you able to unmute yourself and speak to the board?
Sorry about that. Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, just a couple of points, and I've been listening all evening and also looked at the plans. Basically, I think it comes down to a few key issues that there may be a disagreement on. And I would point the, the Planning Board to the concepts of streetscape as well as transition, which are well-defined in the Code of Ordinances. Laura Meade kind of alluded to them at 14K and 15B. I think there's a reasonable disagreement on whether this, the tracks from the streetscape for the neighborhood and whether there is a decent transition. In fact, I would say that we're probably giving more credence to a building that's 200 feet away and trying to make it look more like that and ignoring the buildings that are 15 to 20 or 30 feet away. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here. The bank's done a great job at making some changes. They can, they can make more. The other thing is precedent. Just think about it, the bank has, has actually come off 200, 250 feet off of State Street. No other business has, has gone that far away from State Street towards the neighborhood. Or those that have, they're not quite in buildings that large, but there are some large parking lots. And in the future, I believe that there could be other banks that may want to take advantage of parking lots. And this will set a precedent for the mass and scale of buildings. So look out Essex, Temple, and Charter. So that's just a couple of comments on, on some of the prior comments. Nobody's saying don't build. I think people are saying build appropriately and respect the neighborhood. Nobody's saying it's not business-zoned. The bank has every right to do the, do business in that zone. But our zoning also gives us the right to make it appropriate in terms of what the building looks like. And the bank's a good company. There's no denying that. And just like good people, you can be wrong. So it's up to the planning board to point that out and send them back to fix it even better.
That's two minutes.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, and Andy, you're doing a great job managing the Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Just want to try again, Mary Ann, are you able to speak? Okay. We've heard from the folks who have previously identified themselves as interested in speaking. It looks we have one more now. Stephanie Nikotic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. So I have submitted written comment, as I hope the board knows. I support all of the statements of the abutters. I just wanted to add to my comment a remark about city officials who have said that, that, that this addition allows them to, so now we can finally have sprinklers in the bank. And now we can finally have access, you know, ADA access. And as a 40-year customer of the bank, I'm appalled that they didn't do these things before. And I have to say, I don't think you need a 16,000-square-foot addition to do those things. So I think the bank maybe might want to focus on making its buildings currently fire-safe and ADA-accessible and not make that an issue in this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. The next person we have is identified as S. Nassir. And again, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my name is Dr. Sidon Sijasidin. I'm an owner of Noshur Internal Medicine, is 28 Green Street, which is a historic building. And I'm also an owner of Graff Road, which is more modern building. And I'm a resident of 235-story avenue. I have listened to all the statements. I was also on the meeting for the Historic Commission. The other which was done a week ago, and I will not repeat myself. I'm in a strong recommendation and support of the bank. Lisa Mead and Chip Nutter has presented the case very well. I think it does not take any beauty away from our 1870s building. And I'm also, to disclose, I'm also Board of Trustees of Institution for Savings. And the way it has been laid out, planned, it has been explained very thoroughly by both the architect and our attorney. And I think I'm a strong supporter of this application. The business needs to grow. And I'm also positioned, so there were a few people who brought in the question regarding COVID-19. Although the proposal was made before the pandemic hit, but I think as we are resetting the whole world as we speak, I think we need more space and facilities to follow the social distancing. And I think all the successful businesses as Institution for Savings is, will need more space. And yes, I have listened to all the comments that we can use other buildings and why expand the main office. I think this is our institution savings, the mothership. And from here, all the businesses grew. And I think this building needs to expand. And I think the bank has all the right by the B-zone as presented by the attorney. And it should be strongly considered. That's all what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, Mary Ann, thank you.
Oh, thank God. Thank you. Frank Cousins and I have both been shut out for the last 15 minutes. So if you can unmute Frank after me, that would be really great. Hi, Mary Ann Clancy, 16 Neptune Street, Newburyport. Lifelong resident of Newburyport, former mayor for a couple of years. Hi, Marion Clancy, 16 Neptune Street, Newburyport, lifelong resident of Newburyport, former mayor for a couple of years. I pretty much know what the planning board has to go through to approve this application. And I think Mike's comments at the beginning were pretty straight on. There is nothing that's in this application that would allow the planning board to deny it. There were certainly opinions all the way along, and certainly that's going to happen. I will tell you that it's happened a lot of times, you know, in the past, but you have to make the decision, the tough decision to allow what is in the statute for the city of Newburyport. That's what's there. I think Judith Selwyn's comments were straight on, you know, going down Harris Street, looking at buildings that tall buildings that are standing next to, you know, residential buildings. That's what Newburyport is all about. That is what made us survive 50 years ago and every day. That is what Andy works for every single day is that we mingle, you know, commercial occupations with residential living. That's what we do. You know what? You look across the street from the bank and you look at the library. We would have not have that library if we were having this kind of conversation. It wouldn't happen. So I would implore you to really look at, first of all, what's allowed, what happens, and then what's going on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we're going to move to Frank Cousins, and hopefully he'll be able to address the board.
Thank you, Andy. I think you can hear me?
Yes, thank you, Frank.
Yeah, my name is Frank Cousins. I'm a resident of 242 Water Street. Also the president of the Newburyport Chamber of Commerce. And I appreciate the work that has been put forth by the institution to really try to come up with a plan that it's I think is more than feasible. One of the most important things we need and continue to need in the City Report is to have a very strong, vibrant downtown. And of course, our banks and insurance companies have been a real big part of that over the last probably 120 years. And I think as we move forward, it's very, very important for this plan to move forward and for the planning board to give it an approval. And I appreciate the opportunity of speaking this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. At this time, I just want to call attention. We do have a couple of folks who have called in via phone, and as you may have I said earlier, I did want to circle back with those folks and make sure that they are able to at least give an opportunity to speak if they're interested. So the first person we have that's called in, the phone number begins with 617 and ends with 251. If you are interested in speaking, I'll just give you a moment to identify yourselves. And not hearing anything, I think we'll move on to the next person. The next person, phone number is beginning with 802 and ending in 289. And if you are interested in addressing the board, please speak up. Okay, and the last person is a phone number that begins with 978 and ends with 864. If you are interested in speaking and you'd like to identify yourself for the record. It does not look so. So that being the case, Chair, I just wanted to note that there is one person in the audience who's raised their hand again. I wasn't anticipating originally a second round of public comment. I defer to you.
I think it's late enough. We need to move on.
Okay, so I think in that case that that would conclude our public comment period.
Thank you, Andy, for managing that. Next, the planning board members are going to make their comments. I just want, before we do that, I just want to remind everybody of the planning board's purview with respect to Newburyport zoning ordinances. As you've heard from both the applicant and some of the members of the public, we are looking at applications under the Downtown Overlay District Special Permit and Site Plan Review. But the first of all, about the special permit, I'd like to state that if there is any conflict between the underlying zoning and what the the DOD requires or yes, requires, then the DOD will take precedent. So we are basing our comments and basing our decision on what the ordinance requires that we consider. Site Plan Review is relevant because the construction is more than 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. And there are criteria there that we will be looking at as well. So in summary, the planning board has broad discretion over design, but it is constrained by dimensional controls which have been talked about. The ones that are required for the Business Two District are zero setback from the property line and a 40-foot height maximum, neither of which are being overshot by this application. So what I want to do is ask, do something a little different with the planning board comments than we've done in previous hearings. What I'd like to do is ask that each board member give their comments without interruption, that we go randomly in any order you want to, but everybody gets a chance to speak. When we have each spoken, we will then move on to the applicant's response to both our comments and the public comments and begin a dialogue if needed to clarify any issues that the planning board members have with the application. So with that introduction, I'd like to call on whomever would like to start as a planning board member with your comments.
Excuse me, Bonnie, just as a point of order, it's minor, but I don't think I heard you say you closed the public hearing. I may be mistaken.
No, I haven't closed the public hearing, but I should have closed the public comment session.
Public, my bad, public comment.
Thank you for reminding me. So public comment is closed for now. Public hearing is still open, and we will continue with individual statements, comments from planning board members. Who would like to go first?
Bonnie, this is Anne. I have some comments.
Please.
Um. Just to clarify for the number of people in support of the proposal. What I what I want to clarify, and I think it's very important, yes, this lot is in a B2 zone and meets all the requirements of that zone but for two very important things, which I think is what the planning board should focus on. And that is that it is subject to the zoning provisions of the Downtown Overlay District and also Site Plan Review. So that adds other criteria by which we you know, measure how we deal with this application. With regard to that, I have some comments under special permit findings. I guess based on tonight's testimony from the neighbors, and they're all against the project, no one in support, and the many letters that we have received. My feeling right now is that the requested use, it will impair the integrity and character of the adjoining district, not the B2, but where all these folks live, the surrounding neighborhood. And I think we've also heard significant testimony that it could be detrimental to health and welfare of these residents. Loss of light, addition of noise, those kinds of considerations. The other point under the special permit findings that I cannot analyze because I don't have enough, I guess, fact, that is, I can't give an opinion right now on whether the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. We heard all the testimony from, you know, the bank staff and the many trustees that this was critical to the bank's future. I can't evaluate that. I ultimately, as I get to the end of this, would like to see them come back with something a lot smaller. And I guess with that in mind, I would perhaps have them review their program for that space to indeed evaluate if everything they need is essential to their future viability. I suspect there are things in that building that might be reduced or eliminated that would not affect that. So that's the oh, and then the other is is the DOD. I very much appreciate all of the efforts of the Historical Commission. They've they've done tremendous due diligence on this project and know a lot more about historic preservation than I do. But I am of the opinion that this does not support the DOD. It's, and I I guess I I simply refer to the two reports by the Historical Commission and other verbal testimony to support that. Under Site Plan Review, criteria number four talks about community character. And, you know, is this proposed use in harmony with the architectural style of adjacent buildings and the immediate neighborhood? So it's not just looking at the B2 district. It is also looking at Prospect, Otis Garden, the residential setting. And right now, again, largely because of the large size of this building and perhaps even its location on the lot, I don't think it's in harmony with the neighborhood. And, you know, the real fact is all of the public testimony we received against this project. And with the exception of Waterfront West, in all my years on the planning board, I have not seen such opposition. So that's a fact, and I think it's critical that we listen to the neighborhood. And nobody's saying, don't do anything. And I'm not saying, don't do anything. I'm just saying, I don't think this is it. It's too much, too big. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Next member, please.
I can jump in?
Okay.
So I would strongly want to emphasize that the the use is appro, I think I want to distinguish between the use and the design and the building. And I think that the use, the expansion of the bank is an appropriate use. Providing parking on site is an appropriate use. I'm still mystified as to why a more historically true design wasn't chosen. And by that, I mean had building a building that anchors the corner of Prospect and State Street that does exactly, people have referred to the library across the street. And I think it would make sense for the bank to do the same thing the library did, which is to expand along State Street rather than back into the residential neighborhood. I feel that the statement has been made that this addition is is subordinate and secondary to the historic building. But that's only true if you look at it from State Street, from all of the other three sides of the lot. It is not subordinate and secondary. As a matter of fact, it is it is dominating and and much larger and much more in in your face, kind of basically hides the historic building from the neighborhood. So it would seem to me that, and I've said this before in meetings, so this is not a new statement, that it makes a lot more sense to get rid of that missing tooth that's the the customer parking area on the corner and restore something that is more reflective of what the history of Newburyport used to be, which is to have buildings along State Street instead of parking. I think that could be done. I think it could be done by separating the the two functions that are trying to be combined in that one building. You know, the many times what happens and what makes a building too big is to try to stick too much into it. And I think in this case, trying to put the parking in the same building as the office is is problematic. The, you know, you could have the ones, somebody mentioned having a one-story building at the back of the lot. So I think it was somebody from Otis Place, but I'm not really sure about that. And I think you could put the parking at the back of the lot, put the office functions at the front of the lot, connect them to the to the the back of the historic building and have a great win for the city, which is to restore some of that historic character and have a have an addition that does not overwhelm the historic building the way that the proposed proposed addition does. And again, I want to make sure that the people understand that it's the current building is secondary only if you're viewing it from standing on State Street. If you're viewing it from any of the other three sides of the property, the proposed addition, it overwhelms the historic building and and basically makes it disappear, which I don't think is really consistent with our Downtown Overlay District regulations. I've also heard several times people say that this is something that's allowed by right. And I believe the chair has said that, you know, countered that, but bears repeating that the this is a special permit. And you have to comply with the conditions of the special permit to be to be granted that special permit. And I I just don't see the current plan as as doing that. So while I while I can see the site plan approval being granted, I find it difficult to, at this point, unless there's more information that we get about this, to to see the the special permit being granted. I just don't think that it is has paid enough attention to the neighborhood, and I think there is a clear alternative that would solve everybody's problems. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Who would like to go next? It's late, and in the interest of moving along, if people don't jump in, I'm going to have to call on you. So please help us get moving.
Bonnie, I can go next.
Thank you, Tanya.
Hey, no problem. So I have I have some questions and I have some comments. I don't know. I didn't. I don't know what's appropriate to take first, but I can go through, maybe start with my comments, and then the bank can maybe answer the questions when we get to that point on the applicant. So I just wanted to address some of the public comment that that I read and then also that we heard today. The first is is the the comments that are related to the Zoom format of the meeting. I think that there are some people who are saying that we shouldn't be listening to this in this format. And I would just say that none of us, none of us have chosen the situation that we're in, but I do actually think in some ways we've probably gotten more feedback than we would have because we do have this format, and we're not sitting in a hot city hall right now trying to get through public comment and very tired and sweaty, and we're a little bit more comfortable. So I think that for that, I appreciate Andy and the cities and putting this together. The second thing I want to address is is parking. I think people had talked about parking, and I think when the board, when the applicant initially And I think when the, when the applicant initially had brought forth this proposal, I think I even cautioned that, you know, the neighborhood should be careful about saying that there's a parking issue here because the bank actually has more parking than a lot of downtown businesses. And I, for one, am not a big proponent of parking minimums, especially in downtown. And I think the bank now has, in some ways, almost overcompensated by putting this parking garage structure in there. I appreciate the fact that they're meeting their parking need, but I think that that shouldn't be a neighborhood issue because they have more parking than I think most downtown businesses have. On the historic criteria and the scale, I think that I disagree with Rick in some ways in that I think that having the building in the back of the site where it is, in some ways, makes the historic structure more prominent. And I think if you would have, I do agree there's a missing tooth on State and Prospect, but I think if you had a building there, you would take away from the historic structure. And, and sort of there's just opposition to doing anything there that had, that if the bank, if let's put it on State and Prospect, whether there would still be opposition because now we're taking away from being able to see this beautiful building. So I think that you can see, I think that this does make that building very prominent. And I think that the other building sort of blends and it sort of anchors that corner. And I think a parking lot, I agree with the historic consultant, that the parking lot is, does not really belong there. There does, a structure does belong there. And I think that for scale and dimension, we should be looking at our dimensional guidelines. And this meets, this is below our dimensional guidelines. So I think it does meet that. So I think it does fit in that regard. The questions I have, so those are my comments. I would, I would agree in some ways with the Historic Commission in that I think clapboard might be a better material for the building, at least in the, on the Otis Place side of the building. I think that there's just a lot of brick, and I'm not a huge proponent of a lot of brick. There's brick sidewalks, there's brick facade, it's a lot of brick. But on the flip side, the examples of other brick structures, I think I can see where you reported is special because there is a mix of commercial and residential. So I like, I like that mix and I like what they've done there. I'm not a fan of the bump out on Otis Place, like sort of that where the window comes out. I think that in some ways, actually a straight facade would look better there. I think it actually makes it look odd and out of place and not like the type of building that they've been showing as examples of other brick buildings, if you kept a brick. So that, those are my comments on the material. I had a question on the area, I think it's to the south of the site where there's a generator and there's a path. When I was on site, when I did the site walk, I noticed that there was some good vegetation over there. And that actually did a great job of screening the Garden Street folks. And so I questioned sort of why the bank wouldn't maybe keep that vegetation in place or at least put something back in kind as opposed to adding a walkway to a generator. And so it might make that side, that area, a little bit more palatable for those neighbors if you were able to keep some of the vegetation so that you couldn't really see the brick facade. It is a dense neighborhood, so people are used to seeing buildings next to them. I mean, it's, but I think having that vegetation helps. I had a question on lighting. I think that that's important to know, sort of, is the office lighting going to be on all the time? Is the garage lighting going to be on all the time? Sort of is the, you know, so I think that that's going to be important because it is in that neighborhood. Like, online, I'd be curious sort of noise that it makes, is it going to echo by being in sort of this area? So I'd like to know where else these city lifts have been used and if they've been used in similar neighborhood dense situations like this. Where, and is there going to be a time cutoff? So if I leave my office at midnight, are you going to hear that lift going up and down as I'm trying to get my car? I don't know if the bank works that late, but I'm just making that as a point of discussion. And I thought I had another question, but that might be, oh, signage. I would be, I haven't seen any signage proposals here, so I'm curious if there's any signage plan and if you're planning on putting anything along the street or in the back. And I'd just be curious on how that's going to, how that's going to look and how that's going to fit. So those are my questions and my comments at this point.
Thanks, Tanya. Next.
I can go, Bonnie. Because it's quite late, and I don't know about everybody else, but I get very tired. I'm going to keep this simple. For me, I just want to remind everybody that we do have discretion. And this, it does come down very much to an opinion based on facts like has been stated previously. And because we do have some discretion here, for me, it really comes down to the architecture. And there are two problems we're trying to address. One is compatibility with the neighborhood. The other is compatibility with the existing historic structure. And to me, it really just comes down to the architecture. And this building does not do it for me, both because of scale and massing and materials and generally just the look and feel of the building, both, to both points, to both, to the, how it relates to the neighborhood and how it relates to the historic structure. You know, and we've tried to give advice, it's a very difficult thing to do when you've got several committees giving advice and making recommendations on how to tweak the design. I think really it's just got to go back to the drawing boards for another go-round based on all the feedback that you've gotten to date.
Thank you. That's it, Leah?
That's it.
Thank you. Beth or Dawn? Fight it out. Okay, Beth.
So I fall on the side of thinking that it is not compatible with the mass size, scale, or height of the historic building or the lot and the setting. I agree that it overwhelms the historic structure. I don't think that the other sites that were pointed out are similar and that those are, you know, historic mill buildings that were there. I agree with one of the comments that, you know, just because those are there doesn't mean that that's what should be on this lot and that wasn't the historic use of this lot. So I don't know why we would want to make it something that does overwhelm the neighborhood because I do feel that those examples are overwhelming and not compatible. I think that there can be a better compromise. I think the, you know, I appreciate the aesthetic changes and the bump outs and the changes that were made to try to break things up. But at the end of the day, it is still massive for the area. I mean, I think that we recommended that maybe they go down in height. I think that the height reduction was like one and a half feet. I feel like there needs to maybe be more of a compromise and more thinking on the bank's part about what can be done. And all the, you know, I reiterate that all the statements that they could by right go 40 feet, you know, I don't think that that, given that there's a DOD special permit, we have some discretion to say that 40 feet wouldn't be appropriate. That's true, this isn't appropriate or compatible with the neighborhood. I do have just a couple of questions and requests. One, so in looking at the presentation on page 37 and 54, there's a view from the front of, from State Street looking down Prospect, and the trees are opaque. In all the other pictures, the trees, the opacity has been reduced, you can see through it. I thought that giving a view that showed that you could see through the trees would really help see the levels of the buildings and really see how it fits into the streetscape better. So that would be a request that I would make for a view. Also, if there was something from across the street looking down on, looking down Prospect, I think that would be helpful, too. I was curious as to whether the parking lift is ADA compliant or if there would be any necessary changes to accommodate a handicap space. I know that there's one handicap space on the property. I don't know, you know, if that meets the requirements, but certainly if there was an employee that needed handicap parking, I didn't know whether those, the lift would accommodate that. And then I did think that the cornice was very heavy. That was one aesthetic improvement that I thought should definitely be changed. And then I was curious about the circulation with the garage and the ATM, how that would work. Because I believe one of the exits or entrances to the garage is right near the drive-off ATM. And then I was curious as to whether a shadow study might be done. But again, I think overall, I don't feel like what has been presented is compatible.
Thank you, Beth. Dawn, you're on.
Okay. If I first take a look at our site plan review, I take a look at some of the items for consideration. I note the, one of the items is community character, proposed development. So this is a criterion, one of the criterions that were to follow. The third one is, says, the fourth one, pardon me, "It is in harmony with the architectural style of the adjacent buildings and immediate neighborhood." So it's interesting to use the word harmony, doesn't use the word compatible, doesn't use the word consistent. I am still evaluating what exactly that means and will continue to evaluate what that means. I'll note that this is in a particular district. I don't know, I don't know whether the framers of this ordinance was trying to put this in such that there would be a transition. As some people have said, if you're from one zoning to the other, there's a bright line. There's a hard, there's a hard line. And so if that, if that's the case, if you have major site plan review, it's saying, well, you need to have somehow soften that line. It's not obvious to me that is the intent and/or if there's case law interpreting such on this zoning. The second point is with respect to traffic. I appreciated the zoning administrator's analysis of that traffic. And unless there is some additional information, I did note one of the commenter's point that he thinks it's incorrect. And unless our zoning administrator comes back, I am taking that to parking. The use, et cetera, is correct per the memo that was supplied to us as well as the public. If I may then go on to the DOD, downtown overlay district, and I do have a comment on the DOD. It talks about the procedure on criteria, which is in section 17-F. And it talks about streamlining and harmonization. But before that, it talks about that we shall evaluate this and this means all the requirements of this section. Now, it's unclear to me whether this section means section 27 or 27-F. But in any event, it does talk about streamlining and harmonization. It then talks about, which the Historic Commission has talked about, is the U.S. Secretary of the Interior Standards. I've actually taken a look at the Secretary of Interior Standards, all 252 pages, at least per the PDF. And it's unclear to me exactly what specific section of these standards refer to a site plan putting an additional building. There are some areas in there. So to the extent any of the Historic Commission or anyone else feels that they have a specific response to where there is a clear-cut analysis in the standard, that would be, I'd be appreciative of that. The last item is similar to what others have said, is on the character, et cetera, of the neighborhood. I will agree with some of my colleagues here, our planning board members, that I do think that this structure somehow is physically separated. And I actually like that myself. And, you know, there's pros and cons, and, you know, there's no right or wrong answer, so I understand that. So again, I think it comes down to massing and, you know, what exactly is, this is allowed 40 feet. I am, you know, I'm convinced, and I said this back in February, folks, if this was a line of houses, two feet high, just across from Prospect with the roofs, and maybe you have a little bit different color or something, you're not going to have the driveways, I don't see how we would not approve this. So it almost comes back to some of the material, or, it's not a gabled roof, et cetera. But, and on that point with respect to character, you know, how it fits to the neighborhood, I will admit that I have a bit more problem with the streetscape from Otis than I do in Prospect. You have the street separated, the houses are a little bit larger. I appreciate there's one house immediately adjacent to the side of the building. How on the other hand, I don't think we should be making it our decision based upon one of butter, perhaps to the chagrin of that particular butter. So those are my comments right now. And we'll see what everyone, I guess you have to say, Bonnie. I think you're the last person standing.
Right. So I'm on. Just a few comments, some are reinforcing others you've already heard. And one, my closing one, is something separate. My first comment is, as a result of our site visit, I ask that the current generator and proposed HVAC equipment on the ground behind the Garden Street at residents be protected with soundproofing materials to reduce the noise for the butters. I don't think screening is enough. And that would also be true for anything that's on the roof that makes noise or anywhere else on the site. The issue has been brought up about the noise of the, the potential noise from the parking lift system. And I would, along with others who have asked for it, I'd like some further information about the noise level on that and how that relates to our noise generally in the downtown. And especially off-hours, I guess that was also asked before. "I'm concerned about the height of the structure overwhelming and blocking the sun from residents on Prospect and Otis. And I'm sure the bank can find some creative design solution to at least ameliorate the problem. I don't expect it can be completely eliminated." I have the same problems that many of the board members have with compatibility with the residential neighborhood. And I'm not suggesting that a recreation of a recreational, a residential structure be placed here for retail use. That would be unrealistic and unwarranted. But rather that I'd like to see a streetscape on Prospect and Otis that's compatible with not just, well, with the residential structures that are there. There's been a lot of focus by the applicant about how they are building this addition to complement or in any way possible, work with the existing historic structure on the site. And I think they've given less attention and need to give more attention to how it also works in the neighborhood. In closing, I'd like to reference a book. It's called "The Old Way of Seeing," written by architect and critic Jonathan Hale, who throughout the book praises Newburyport for harmonious designs of old buildings. And some of you may have attended a presentation he made here, I think it was a couple of years ago. In his book, he focuses, he says that a focus on style, materials, and size often omits attention to proportions, patterns, and rhythm. And I quote from his statement, "Any building is as real as the next, but it is the play of pattern that makes a building feel real. Style, color, scale, historical accuracy, and craftsmanship all must be part of the music of pattern. It is, if there is a song, if there is no song, all the rest counts for nothing." End of quote. So my request is, please make this building sing. So my request is, please make this building sing. Thank you. Okay. Those are our comments. I will open it now back to the applicant to respond and to have whatever back and forth we need to get to a point of moving on. Attorney Mead, would you like to take over at this point to respond?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go through a number of these. And then I think that we have heard a lot of your comments. And I might want to tease a little bit more of those out, and then we'll talk about a continuance. I'm going to work backwards. So as far as the sound of the mechanics in the lift system, they are about the sound of a residential garage door opener. Obviously, it will be entirely enclosed, but that's literally the sound inside the building. And then, of course, the garage door opens. The lights would go on and off, they would be motion activated inside, so they wouldn't be on all of the time. And similarly, the lights in the building, like they do in the regular bank building, would go off when people go home at night. So that wouldn't be different either. Andy, if you could go to the view up Prospect, the one that's a little further back, I think it's the, maybe the second to the last, or third to the last one that we have, right before the Prince Place View. Keep going. One more, I think. There we go. So there was a question about shadow. And, you know, as you can see from this building, I can't tell you exactly. This, the photograph for this rendering was taken in...
April 22nd.
April 22nd. So that's the time of year, and it's midday. And so you can see the shadow, because you can see the shadow from the corner of the house on the corner. You can see that little shadow come out. And these are accurate renderings, they're computer models. So you can see the shadow from the building that goes over the parked cars at the end, right there. So that's to give you an idea of the shadow. I mean, we don't, certainly don't have a shadow study right now, but these are accurate renderings. Given the height of the building, which is 29 feet 8 inches and not 30 feet, that's essentially the shadow. You're not going to get a shadow across the street, maybe in the middle of the winter, like you would in a number of places, but that's it. I think what's important also on this particular point, because there was a question about the height of the building, I think maybe by member Gardner earlier. It's important to remember that this, again, the height of this building is 29 feet 8 inches. The average height of the buildings directly across the street and this corner house on Prospect Street is 130 with a peak at 137 elevation. So our elevation is 130, and those elevations are 130 and 137 at the peak. And the one on the corner is 132 with 132 at the peak and 127. So the height of this building is similar, except for the 18th century buildings is similar to the other buildings along this street, just for perspective. I certainly hear the comments related to the screening in the rear around the generator. And we'll go back and take a look at that. And I just want to look at a couple more of the questions, shadow height. Secretary of the Interior Standards, Tanya, Garden Street Lighting. So I think I've answered some of the bigger questions. And so here's what I want to tease out a little bit. And I think that if you, if you hear what Mr. Tainter said, and you hear what Tanya said, we have two different perspectives, right? So there's one perspective that says, put the building at the corner of State and Prospect Street. Well, I can assure you, it would be my guess that the Historic Commission wouldn't be so happy about that, because you will not be able to see the institution for the original 1871 building coming up State Street, in that horizontal view of that structure. So I don't know that that, I think, I just think that that's almost a non-starter. I just don't even understand how we balance that with the, with the location of the building in the rear. And I certainly hear your massing and all of those other comments, but I think from a location point of view, I will tell you that the bank is not, really not in the position to block the view of that 1871 building coming up State Street. And unless I hear, other than from Mr. Tainter, that that would be a preferred avenue to go down, I really, I just, I can't even imagine it. And so I'd kind of like to hear a little bit back from you on that, if we're going to go back and address some of these questions, because that is a fundamental question.
Rick, could you clarify if that was just an idea or something you really were going to push?
Sure. So I hope that Lisa is not saying that, you know, not taking me to the extreme and saying, replace the fountain with the building. I was thinking about having it set at the same setback as the historic building, or a little bit further back, but just filling up that hole that's right there, which makes, to me, makes a lot more sense. I mean, do something more, as I said, do something more like what the library did. That was actually, somebody actually made the comment about if we had, if we had imposed these, you know, had imposed this kind of level of review, the library would not have been able to have been constructed. And that's just totally absurd. I'm really talking about something that is similar to what happened to the library, which is to create some type of action that continues the streetscape, respects the historic building, and also kind of respects the historic, this historic character. You know, there was a period, I don't know, there's the 70s or 80s, when, and it happened with lots of banks. I don't know whether it happened with this bank or not, but where banks acquired properties and tore them down and made parking lots. And we're living with a lot of that destruction in our, in a lot of historic downtowns. Newburyport's not the only place. But I think it'd be a great opportunity to try to bring some of that historic streetscape and just the scale and rhythm back. There was never historically, there was historically a larger brick building, you know, in the, where the customer parking lot is right now. There was pretty much open space at the back of the lot, except for that one residence. So I guess I'm thinking about this, and it's my perception, as to how we integrate this expansion with the historic neighborhood. I just don't see that the, you know, there, I don't see that this does that. And so I guess I was trying to look for something that would be more in keeping with the way Newburyport historically developed.
So I get, my question, thank you, Rick. I have to tell you, I think that the addition on the library is entirely different than, than it would be to add in addition on, to the side of this building, or place a building beside this building. Particularly the type of building that the Tracy Mansion is, and how you drive up State Street and you see the Tracy Mansion first, and then the library peels off of it. That's, that's not the orientation of this historic structure. And it's an entirely, I mean, part of the, part of the beauty of this historic structure is that you see the side and it carries around to the front. I guess, Madam Chair, I would like to know-ish where the rest of the board is on, on that comment.
Well, what we heard from everybody else was some variation on adapting the design of the structure that's being proposed. So if I'm wrong about that, would anybody who is looking at something different or similar to what Rick is saying, but different from that structure that's already being proposed, would you speak up now? So it's fair to say that the rest of us are looking at the current proposal, but asking that it be adapted more to be compatible with the residential neighborhood? Is that a correct...
I'm not sure I would write off Rick's idea quite that quickly. I mean, I do, I think Lisa's made some astute comments about how the current bank is experienced. And so it would be, it would be a real challenge to make it, to make it work, I think. I think it's a very interesting idea. And I would like to know that they looked at it as a possibility. I mean, that would be comforting to me. And because it's extremely complicated, even just trying to do that, to squeeze a building in beside it, and it would be setback from the street, and you would have to have all, presumably would have to have all of the program elements that they're currently trying to squeeze into the, to the current building as proposed. So it may end up being more massive, and it may not even work. But it would be interesting to me to know that they explored that as a possibility. And then all the parking would then somehow squeeze into the back. I don't know if it's even possible. But to Rick's point, I think it'd be interesting to know that it was explored.
I agree. And I wonder if, you know, exploring, redoing, renovating the 1980 addition or putting the addition more in that area rather than filling out this lot that is very much a residential area.
Well, thank you, Beth and Leah. You know, I think that everybody also needs to remember, again, that we're not just talking about the historic structure on the lot. We have a 1980 addition that serves a significant function to the bank right now. It's where the main drive-up window is, and then there are other functions in there that while they may be changed, they are programmed. So, you know, the bank can't just willy-nilly forget about the 1980 building. It exists, and it's used, and it's important to the function and program of the bank.
I don't think anyone was proposing getting rid of it.
Just a couple more points, the, you know, the, historically, you couldn't see the side of the bank, because there were two buildings beside it. So, you know, I understand that now that the buildings have been torn down, it's nice to be able to see the side of the bank. I don't know that that has any bearing on the historicity of the site or the value of how you design the site. The other thing is, we're talking about a street that was historically a two-way street. It was converted to a one-way street at some point in the very recent past. There has been talk over the years about reversing the one-way pattern on State Street. So that would totally undercut the, you know, the concern about hiding the bank. I think that we, I really think that we need to be looking at, I mean, what I'm suggesting is not, I don't think is the only way to look at this, but I do feel that, and also, I don't, as Leah said, there's, I had no suggestion of getting rid of the more modern addition on the back. I just think it's worth looking at to see whether it's possible to create a commercial building on the Commercial Street and take some of that commercials bulk away from the residential neighborhood.
So there seems to be enough interest to look at some alternatives. I would, I don't want to put the bank at a disadvantage where there, I know, I'm going to try to jump in here, Lisa, before you say it, and say, you know, what I think you might be going to say. And that is that we keep asking for different alternatives. I think if it's a way to sketch out what some of these alternatives would look like, and not put a whole lot of expensive renderings into it, but to just explore these ideas to get a sense of what might be possible in it, that it would help to alleviate members of the board our concern that we force ourselves to go toward one possible solution that may not be the best one. Could the bank consider some alternatives and help us with this? Because we want what's best for all concerned.
So I'll tell you what I'd like to do. I'd like to ask for a continuance to the, to your first meeting in August. Madam Chair, I thank you for those closing comments. I will tell you that I know that all of you work very hard, and the bank has worked very hard. And I understand that there are neighborhood concerns, but the reason that we have standards and zoning ordinances is so that property owners know what their rights are and what they can expect. And while it is difficult to balance the rights of property owners against the concerns of neighbors, everybody buys their property with their eyes wide open, or they should. So I appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate the comments of the concerns of the board and the chair's closing comments, and would request a continuance to your first meeting in August.
Before we take that, as, take a vote on that, I just want to, oh, I hope I didn't lose my train of thought. A special permit, I just want to reiterate that a special permit is a discretionary permit. And the criteria are listed. And coming in for a special permit asks that the applicant be open to different points of view on that, that special permit, and that we come to an agreement together, that we are not dealing with a straightforward underlying zoning with site plan review, which is just to make sure everything works well on the site. So I hope that we are going forward to the next meeting with an idea that we are all going to be, that we are going to keep talking about this.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I don't disagree at all that the planning board has discretion on a special permit. But there are criteria by which people develop plans. And I'm merely suggesting that there, that the property owner understands and has a right to rely on those criteria and the discretion. And that while it may be true that there are impacts in the neighborhood, generally speaking, that that's the balance, and that the criteria are there for a reason. I don't disagree at all with your discretion.
Would any other board member like to speak at this time before we consider a continuance? And so we are continuing, we're entertaining a motion to continue to August 5. Does anyone need any more information from the applicant about expectations for what will be presented at that meeting? Okay, then, could I have a motion to continue until August 5?
I will make that motion to continue to August 5.
Thank you, Leah. And a second?
I'll second it.
That, Tanya?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll take a roll call vote of those people eligible to vote on this. Beth Delio?
Yes.
Anne Gardner? Anne?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. So this is continued to August 5.
Chair Sontag, this is Andy Port.
Yes.
If I could just make a brief comment. We, I've noticed during the board's deliberations, there's been one or two hands that have been raised by the audience. raised by the audience. Just to be clear for those in the audience, there is a designated public comment period during the board's hearing process. So that portion of the meeting obviously has been closed, and now this particular hearing has been continued to another date. So, you know, if you're looking to speak at public comment, it does need to be within those periods of time. I assume the board will allow further public comment if there's additional information provided by the applicant at a future meeting. But that's the reason why there isn't additional public comment being taken now, because that comment period has been opened and held by the board already.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, so do I need to do anything else about closing? I'm not closing the public hearing, it's staying open because we're continuing. I think I've done everything procedurally, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm exhausted. I think everybody else probably is. These look like minor things, and they probably would be under normal circumstances, the rest that remain on the agenda. Do I have any argument about continuing? I mean, do I have the possibility to continue these to, what's our next meeting date? July 15?
Yeah. It may be actually not be that, granted, the Merrimack Street application, there does need to be some discussion of the decision language. I think Lisa Mead is here this evening and could speak for the applicant, but we were hoping the board might be able to wrap up the final language on that one. The other two items, I think, could be dealt with very quickly. The continuance for Parker Street is just a vote to continue, and the 44 Topps Lane A&R Plan, I think, is eligible for endorsement, and that could be a matter of approval.
Madam Chair, my client has asked, my client has gone to bed and has asked to continue his matter to the next hearing. That is for 342? Yes, ma'am. Okay. So can I have a motion to continue 342 Merrimack Street to July 15?
This is Don Walters, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Who is that?
It's Anne. I think there are two. Go ahead, Rick. Okay, Rick.
Rick seconds the motion, and I have to take a roll call.
Bonnie, can I just, can I make one comment on that?
Yes.
Can we make, can we just make sure that that one's first? We probably should have taken that one up, because it was just a decision. I don't know.
I know, but we did have, no, we have to review the criteria. It might take 10 or 15 minutes, or 10 minutes, anyway. I just didn't want to deal with all of everybody there. But it's a good point. Andy, please ensure that that's first on the agenda.
Will do.
Okay. Let's see, of the, well, to continue it, everybody can vote. Alden Clark?
Affirmative.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got, you're welcome, Lisa. Going on to minor site plan review for Zero Parker Street, I just need a motion to continue to August 5.
So moved. Oh, I'll take it, Rick, and you can second it? How about that?
Second.
Okay. Leah makes the motion, Rick seconds. Let's do it again. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, so that is continued. 44 Topps Lane is an approval not required. Andy was going to present that anyway. Can you do that now, please?
If folks can see the screen here, we've got the lot required plan shown on the screen. And as you can see, it's a, there's a slight reconfiguration going on of the lot line. And the office recommends endorsement of the plan. The plan is eligible for the endorsement. And we just didn't want to have the applicant have to wait any longer. There's a shorter time period for the board's obligation to endorse any of our plans, so.
Okay.
It's straightforward to me.
Yeah.
I make a motion to endorse the plan.
That's Leah. And a second?
Second.
Beth is the second. Take the vote. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. All right, I think we can also approve the minutes. Just to remind everybody, the, we've done some edits, just really minor editorial, you know, filling in blanks and so on, for Linda, between Rick, Don, and myself. And we believe the minutes are in good shape. We don't think there's anything substantive that we need to bring before the board. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Rick, and a second?
I'll second. Go on.
Thank you, Don. And I'll call the roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. All right, Andy, is there anything that you have to update us on that can't wait?
No, we can wait on everything else. Thank you.
You sure we don't have a full-blown discussion of potential zoning amendments?
It's a great time of the night to start that.
Yeah, right. Okay. So before we adjourn, I just want to thank everybody for hanging in there. There's still, obviously, a lot of thinking to be done on this 93 State Street. So we'll see where we go from here. I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
So moved. Whatever.
Leah's the motion, Don gets the second, and the last roll call of the night. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, Linda. Thank you.
Look at Don.
Andy, I can't even remember the name. You know, we just, we're doing what we have to do, and I really, really appreciate it. And obviously, mark your calendar as much as you can in blood for August 5.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Bonnie, that was well done.
Thank you. And just to let you know that...
Did you say in blood?
But she will re, listen to the recording, so she will be voting with us on the institution. So you're welcome. Come again. I'll see you in two weeks.
Okay. Night, everybody.
Good night, guys. Good night.
Night.
Bye.